He's coming.
I think he'll probably have, we'll, we'll do some claims here real quick. Nice stamp on what today's date, right?
Uh, today's date, yeah, the twenty ninth.
It's the twenty ninth all day?
All day. That was a bad spot to stamp in. I wasn't thinking on that one. Well Doug, is there anything you want to say?
Uh, sure, I'll just go ahead and begin. Phil Goshi has announced that he is going to retire from the Secondary Road Department. Phil started December seventeenth of two thousand seventeen, so he's been with us almost seven years. Uh, Phil ran a maintainer, snow removal routes, kind of west of Bancroft, did a very good job. I know Phil has had at least two instances where he's been called out to rescue people in snowstorms. One was a, Bill and Phil went out, it was a bad Sunday morning, went over to Santa Ana. And they went and got a couple of people that were stranded all night, got them in. And then I think it was last Christmas time, wasn't it Phil, you had, somebody tried to run one sixty-nine, got stuck up there north. Phil's gotten involved in a couple of those, those types of things for us. Good operator, good person, but we just want to say thank you Phil for your, your work. And you and Julie, you have a very happy, healthy retirement, so anyway, thank you very much. On behalf of the Secondary Road Department, we'd just like to present you a plaque here with a maintainer. Anyhow, that you're driving, that's in appreciation, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-four. Can we get a picture here Phil, please? Yeah, maybe, I don't know, right?
Doug, can I hold that?
Just go over just there. Is that better?
Get the perfect picture.
One, two, three.
Very good, thanks Phil.
Thank you.
And I think the board may have a plaque for you, one and two here.
Yep, it's a man of the flag, uh, thank you for your years of service, thank you.
One, two, three, again. Smile. Ah, much better.
Yeah, you're retired.
It's hard work, isn't it?
Yeah, I think you've left my road in good shape for the next operator. I know that.
Very good.
Thanks Phil.
Thanks Phil.
Thank you, have a good one. Donna, Wellness Committee Minutes and Wellness Update.
Minutes are in your package? I think we've been off a few weeks, so hopefully, maybe it's not in this week's package. I was at the NIRA support meeting last week. What I'm gonna say, probably the highlights, Blue Shot through November twenty-second. We're also starting to work on taking items for the silent auction for Christmas. The funds raised from that go to a nonprofit. So if you have a nonprofit that you'd like to nominate, let me know. And safety, again, we're trying to get on every other month. Chris has been working on the emergency action plan, so the meeting on November thirteenth, we'll start to go over that. That's actually been separate from the continuation of operation plan. I think really, it's just trying to get those plans updated, streamlined, so that people actually have them accessible, know what, know what's in them. So I think that's it for Wellness and Safety, Alice, any questions?
Any questions from the board? Alright.
General Assistance, continuing to see an ongoing increase, I think I say this every time I come, with rent and utilities, I kind of want to talk about that in a couple of minutes into further detail. Christmas, we started taking applications yesterday, today, next Monday, Tuesday. The drop-off will be December sixteenth and seventeenth, and then pickup for individuals that were adopted is on the eighteenth. And I just kind of mentioned the utilities and rent. Our ordinances are, since two thousand eight, we are not, that is kind of the standard. General Assistance doesn't do a lot of changing of ordinances, I've checked with other counties. We did have a retreat September twenty-fourth. I think I sent you the survey results from the counties, it's a little bit of a cumbersome package. I think it just kind of helps us understand what other counties are seeing, I think eighty-four out of the ninety-nine responded. What I would like to do is maybe have a discussion on our ordinances. Our rent is a hundred and seventy-five a month. It isn't meant to pay the whole rent, but that has gotten to a point where that's been the forever amount. We are, I think, in the, I think there's about eleven other counties that, that give that amount. And those, the funding is supposed to help you, bridge you while you're waiting for federal funding. Unfortunately, our federal funding, there's a significant waiting list. The competitive, I think, can I bring that with me? For a one-bedroom in Algonas, like seven fifty, and like two is eight seventy. So that hundred and seventy-five doesn't go very far. So I'd kind of like to talk about that, the reason we need to talk about it.
Do you know what that average would have been the last time the ordinance was updated by agents?
It, you know what, it was, I don't know what the rent would have been, I would have said more of like three fifty, four hundred, even then. But that, I still think that's, that's the standard, what they're, they're saying they'll give. I don't think that that's what's in the marketplace, or wasn't maybe at that time.
No, like what, what would have the average rent for those type, those one and two bedrooms and stuff been at that time? Like what kind of percentage would it have been paying maybe?
It don't have, I mean, I probably could get it, but I don't have that. Actually, the hundred and seventy-five, I think, even was, it was updated in two thousand eight, but that rate has remained stagnant for decades.
Okay, well maybe.
Probably since the beginning of time. Quite honestly.
One of those things.
One of those things, that that's just kind of been the, what has been in there, I guess I can't explain why or not.
Is there a target that other counties aim for a certain percentage, like quarter, a third, half? And is there any?
I don't know if there's any rationale to that. No, I'd have to do some further checking if there's a percentage of competitive rent that they would have, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, kind of if there's some sort of basis for the number, some goal or target or anything.
If there is, I don't know, I think rent's been a hundred and seventy-five and utilities is a hundred and fifty. But the reason I bring that up, if we were to do that, we'd have to do it during budget time too, because our current budget numbers cannot absorb that. So it's kind of a process, if we really want to look at redoing the ordinance, we also have to do it in a timing or a manner where our, our budget can absorb that.
Very good.
Any questions?
You guys got any questions or thoughts? Okay, well, yeah, I guess I would, I mean, if you can find some more information.
Percentage, why, well, I can kind of try and get a window, it's.
Or, or even other counties, if they're at, if they're at three hundred and their market's eight hundred, I mean, you might be a little less than half or something, I mean, even, even the general consensus of kind of where neighbors are at, or anything.
Well, I can get the nine-county area probably, because I can get those rates, to see what those apartments are.
Their rates and their average rents in the area.
And then what they give. But I think what they, quite honestly, I'd say we're all within the same ballpark. I don't know that any county, no matter where they're at, I think Polkton, you know, those are at four or five hundred, but that's because.
Whole different ballgame.
Whole different ballgame, but we are, we are very similar to other counties, honestly.
Alright, who's your thought?
North Iowa Council will keep up with rents.
North Iowa Regional Housing?
Well, I'm, actually, I've been doing the, the North Iowa Community Action, you go to.
North Iowa.
You go to Community Action.
Yeah.
And they, I don't.
Too many North Iowa.
Right, there are too many North Iowa Community Actions, primarily utilities. They do the Low Energy Heat Assistance Program, I go by LIHEEP, so it's hard for me to give you the whole acronym. They typically do that, they do very little rent. I don't think that their ordinances have a lot, their policies have a lot to do with rent. They offer a zillion other programs.
We've had a couple of exceptions to policy, like with Care Connections, if it's a, a mental health case, but that's about, about it for rent.
Right, and they've gotten pretty limited on that, because we used to be able to do a significant when somebody was applying for social security disability, and pay the full amount of rent, not just a stay. But what was your question with regional housing?
No, you're on.
Community action.
Okay, because regional housing does, is the federal, section eight approved housing, where they give a voucher.
Well, the housing part, there's never enough money for that either.
Oh, no, and I wouldn't, I would not, again, this is an assistance and a bridge to kind of help if you're in a situation ongoing, if you have no funds to pay rent, nobody would have the capacity to do that.
Right.
No, and especially at competitive rent mark, the rates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not even touching that, that's just like if somebody's having a pickup and they need a little assistance.
Is there a time limit on what we have currently, like X number of months or anything?
Up to two months in a year. And honestly, I operate pretty much one month, it has to be some pretty extenuating circumstances for two months. Then it's the education on have you applied for food stamps, have you applied for heating assistance, let's look at a budget. Just because even, we can't absorb that.
Yeah.
Our budget's like four thousand dollars a year, so it doesn't go very far.
Alright, any other thoughts or questions, comments from the board here? Alright, nah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Kendall.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I sent you guys the information, and hopefully you've been reading my minutes. We've been dealing on this particular property, south of Algonas, probably since June. This possibility of the Conservation Board acquiring it. It's a hundred twenty-eight, roughly a hundred twenty-eight acres southwest of town. The land is currently in the Wetland Reserve program, and he's wishing to sell it to the Conservation Board for Wildlife Habitat and Public Recreation. So we're at the point, we do have a conditional purchase offer. The, the biggest part of those conditions are on the second to the last page, where the Conservation Board would need to get a habitat grant to assist in funding for that. And he was, could be able to wait for us to go through the habitat grant process to fund part of that. The rest of the money would come from the Kasoot County Conservation Reserve, which was private donations we have, and other private donations. None of the asking funds for this is tax dollars, it's all from our Conservation Reserve account.
Yep, I, I did see all that in the packet, so thanks for that overview. Any questions from the board, or any other tidbits you want to highlight, or?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it.
How do you plan on accessing this?
Uh, the public access is from Highway one sixty-nine on the east, that's shown on your map. That was purchased, when he put that in the WRP, it's a thirty-three foot wide. Right now, it's a mowed grass strip, that's public access from the east from Highway one sixty-nine.
Okay. Why did you say that much?
I believe thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three foot, how is that? It's not a graded road.
It is not a graded road, no, right now it's a.
It's just a grass strip?
It's a grass strip presently, yes.
Okay, so Conservation's going to maintain that access?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the, what are the, your hopes for what to do with the property, I guess?
A lot of the, the property's already been put in wildlife management practices, because it's in the weather reserve program. Previous landowner planted native grass, he had shell water, wetlands created, so what our Conservation Board staff would be basically to maintain the existing native grasses that are there and use it as a wildlife area and a public recreation area, obviously hunting would be probably the top priority, but it also is bordered on the south end, the west side, the east fork, so also potentially fishing. And, you know, general nature study, all those types of things, bird watching, field trips.
Does that grass strip cut across somebody else's property?
Yeah, it, it comes in from the field, and then it comes across Redding's, the gravel pit, and then it ends up connecting to the trail property.
So they have no objections to you maintaining that strip or having an easement on it?
It, it's, it's purchased ground, so no.
Okay. It's not just, it's purchased.
It's not an easement, it's, it's.
They own the lane?
They own the lane.
They do own the lane, okay.
They own the lane from where his property starts, all the way to Highway one sixty-nine.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's.
That's that little yellow highlight?
Yes.
Strip there, okay. It just shows one line there, like property line, but I didn't look at it on my, on the map.
It would be this line right here.
Okay, yep.
Coming in from one sixty-nine all the way to the property.
Yep.
That is owned by the property owner, and it is part of those.
So that would be part of the transaction?
That'd be part of the transaction, that's part of the legal description.
Doug, did you have something else?
Yeah, where's parking going to be planned for?
The parking would probably be on the far southeast corner of the property, as you come in, right now, there's a gate.
So at the end of that?
At the end of that lane?
At the end of that, yes.
Okay.
And the native grasses, how do they withstand the flooding that we had on spring, or is it going to have to be reseeded?
The last time I was out there, they were coming back fairly good, but that is an issue we'll have to address just because with the flooding we had this year, a lot of it was underwater, as was all of the flood plain.
So Conservation will have to reseed all that?
No, the, that's part of the Wetland Reserve easement program, if it has to be reseeded, they would reseed it.
They will reseed.
Yeah.
So we don't have staff or equipment, or any, anything going into reseeding, yet someone else comes in and do that?
Yes.
Okay.
That was part of his agreement when he got it in the WRP.
Okay.
That they would do the seeding and knowing, help was established.
Okay.
What is the?
Go ahead, Paul.
What is the impact on, on your reserve fund then? For purchasing?
Would be about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, what?
Our, our portion would be a hundred and seventy thousand.
What's it at right now for balance, what do you have available?
Six hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Okay, and you said a hundred and seventy?
Yes.
Maybe I missed that, what, where's the other two hundred, eight thousand coming from then?
That's through the habitat grant.
That's through the habitat grant, okay.
That's the conditional purchase, if, if we don't get the grant, we don't get the property.
Okay.
Who, who sets the price, are you, that's their, what they're asking?
We had an appraisal, appraiser set the price, then we negotiated with the landowner. It's appraisal service, Fred Greeter, Landmark, or not Landmark, Appraiser was out of Mason City, did the appraisal.
Are you at the appraisal price or below?
We are below the appraisal price. Appraised out of three thousand an acre, we negotiated, ended up at two thousand nine fifty an acre, so we are fifty dollars an acre below appraisal price.
How much, how much tax dollars are going to have to go into the annual maintenance piece?
That's hard to say, because we don't have a, a dollar figure on like, where's like Boeing or something like that.
Or seating, or?
Yeah, seating's already completed.
Are the buildings going to stay?
No, as, as part of that purchase agreement, everything that's on there goes, and that is listed.
Yep, I saw that was listed in your conditions.
There's several old pieces of equipment, and he's got a little cabin on Skins in there, and all that will be removed, he has several, I call them permanent deer stands, but they're wood deer stands, unlike a trailer, that type of thing, those all be removed.
Okay.
They'll, they'll become property of the parent owner.
So if the grant doesn't go through, you'll still have to pay the, uh, reserve?
The grant, if the grant goes, does not go through, answer your question, the deal's off.
You don't purchase the property?
The additionally.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's in the agreement.
They'll keep the five thousand.
No, that comes back. That, that was just earnest money, down payment, we don't get enough money back.
Sure.
That was listed in the purchase agreement too.
So being this is a twenty-seven-ish percent hit to your reserve fund? I mean, is there, I don't know what projects that you're hoping to do in the future, is this something you feel is worth spending that much?
Yes, we do, yeah. We, our board builds, this is a tremendous opportunity, property that doesn't come along very often. That's why they want to pursue it, there's also potentially some other private funds that would be used, off the top of my head, pheasants forever, I know they would contribute towards that project, bring that hundred and seventy thousand down a little bit, but, and there's other possible private owners too.
Okay. Any other questions from the board here?
You know, I just, I live across the river from this.
Okay.
I just have some concerns with how far shot flies, because I fish.
Oh, for hunting? Okay, the.
You know, and in the fall.
Yep.
I spend time down at the river, my family does, I'm not the only one, I'm not speaking for my neighbors, but there are other neighbors along this property, right to the west, that are closer than I am. I do have concern about that.
Have you had issues before?
Well, it's been Dick Trail, it's been.
I know, but he's a avid hunter, and I know there's a lot of hunting going on down there.
Does he waterfowl hunt?
Yes.
He does?
That's what he told me, he's told me he's shot everything that moves on that land, deer ducks.
I have with him, but I assume that he's a little more respective of it than the public may be down there on that, when I'm standing on the riverbank. And I've been there, heard gunshots, I mean, that's, that's one person, or a family, compared to the general public being in there.
Sure.
So that, that is part of my concern. Because I'm not the only one that goes down there and uses my property, the neighbors use their property the way they want to. And with slugs, straight wall cartridges anymore, the distance on those is, you know, they probably fly three hundred yards.
Do we have any protections in place for adjacent landowners for our other properties right now, or anything off the top of your head there, Kendall?
Well, what, what we've done, where, where you have a close adjacent landowner, we put a, a no shooting zone. Come to mind, Smith Wildlife Area, there's no shooting zones, because we got Dr. Moss on the west side, we got Mark Miller, Mike Miller on the south side, and there's other landowners, so we've created buffer. In that particular piece of ground, there is no residence within two hundred yards. So, you know, we do not have to do that, but certainly there could be people fishing the river, but if you look up and down on the wildlife areas, that's on every area we have. I mean, if you went hunting on just about any area, there could be, that's along the river, there certainly could be somebody fishing there.
Yeah.
So you can't, you know, you cannot regulate everything, you have to, you know, rely a little bit on the, the responsibility of the hunter, if he's going to be on that property, the same as all our other properties, the same as all the other people that hunt on the properties we have.
This seems to be a more populated one. There's four residents, right there. Right on the other side of the river.
That'd be an option, I guess, if it, if the houses do fall, I haven't done the map, they do fall in the two hundred yards, we could go do the same thing we did, south of town, put a boundary.
And that's.
No shooting, no shooting zone, basically.
Right, but that's to a residence.
Yeah.
And there's a trail, I know, on the, starting just south of my place, running south, right on the riverbank, that is frequented, I mean, they, they cut saw, they, if logs fall, they cut them out. This spring, they spent time down there cutting debris that floated in there, so that they could regrease themselves down.
What's your process for going through no shooting zones or buffers like that? Do you go kind of evaluate those as people request them, or what do you, what do you typically do for buffers?
We, we basically, that's a good question, we, we follow the Iowa D and R regulations, because that's where most of our county public, in our ordinance, that we adopted their restrictions and regulations. So if there is a, a need to mark the two hundred yard zone, we would post it as such.
What if it?
We have instances where we've had special requests, I guess we'd have to look at that, it's a case by case. I think the prime example, we just posted, I'm sure you're familiar with the Roch Smith property the Conservation Board have, Northeast. We just got done posting that, he requested part of that be no hunting, which was a little bit, which was fine. He also posted part of it, bow hunting only, so there.
But that was at the seller's request, right?
That was a seller's request. And that, in that instance, it wasn't a seller, it was a donation, so that's a little bit different, yeah.
Yeah, but it was, it was the previous owner that was giving it with those conditions, yeah.
Yes, the previous owner.
Being this is a little more populated than some of those other areas, that would be something we would at least have to work out with, with people who do live there, and trails that are used, and such things as that, I guess. Yeah, I, I guess to Kyle's point, are there any, have you ever had this before, where you worked out with adjacent?
We, we.
Users of property?
Landowners or?
We, we did, um, Smith Wildlife Area, where we have a church shack, we had, we originally purchased that, there was landowners within two hundred yards of our boundary fence, and we worked with them, and we posted that. within two hundred yards of our boundary fence, and we worked with them and we posted that as a no shooting zone. Mainly for rifles and shotgun, we didn't think it was necessary with the bow, but it was for the firearms. There's no firearms zone. So yes, we have done that in the past.
Okay.
Just posted this to remind people that there is a house, you know, in certain vicinity of that. I don't know. I mean, we certainly can look at the setback on the residents, but I don't know how you can monitor people traffic. Because on all our county areas, we have people that hunt, we have people that go out and walk their dogs.
Right.
So how do you tell the hunters you gotta stay two hundred yards away from somebody walking their dog on the same piece of property they have a right to? I don't think you can, no.
You have a no shooting area, but that doesn't mean you can't walk your dog, but.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we all, I think we all can realize that just because you put a sign up doesn't stop everybody, but if it's a general discouragement for the protection of the neighbors, that could be beneficial. Is there any thoughts from the board on on these points that have been brought up?
And I guess one other taxes are currently being paid on this?
About eleven hundred a year.
What's that?
Taxes run on this property about eleven hundred a year.
Eleven hundred a year. So if a private individual were to purchase it for what you're gonna purchase it at, the taxes would be higher?
No, I would assume it'd be the same as what the current landowner's paying. Because of the restrictions online.
How long is the timeframe for their current agreement that the landowner has?
Forever.
That's perpetual.
Wetland reserve program is a permanent, permanent agreement.
So he's already been paid for that easement?
Yes.
At fair market value when he did it?
Whatever it is.
In twenty twenty two?
Right.
Is that that recent that it was just put in?
Yeah, he was paid a good dollar amount.
So there's no stipulations that he can't sell within a certain amount of time?
Does, yeah, I was.
Being said, he got a payment out of it.
Yeah, and does that really make this fair market value if he got a full market value already a couple of years ago?
The appraisal was done on the WRP existing land, not what it was prior to that.
Guess my question was. Let's see, he got paid once, how many he paid twice?
Because there's a there's called residual value on.
It is.
Yeah, I could I could see there would still be value, but doesn't, because is that a federal government program he signed up for?
Yeah.
Is there any repercussions with that?
We did the same thing several years ago when we bought property from our client right next to the St. Benedict Wildlife area. He had that in the wetland reserve program. Same thing, and then he sold the residual value to us. So there is, it's called residual value, but you still have to follow all the restrictions of the easement.
On the north side of that gravel road there?
No.
Is that March? Oh, okay.
South side of the gravel road.
Okay.
Are you talking Benedict Pitts?
Yeah, the north end of the pits.
Okay.
So what you're saying by position, I mean, those they get an annual payment from the federal government with wetlands, and so that that future.
They get a one-time payment.
Absolutely. He got it all.
He got a one-time payment for the property, and then if he wants to sell it, he can, there's still a value to that. That's what we're buying.
Looks like as far as Doug, from where you live and and Texas and is there chase out there? But kind of right on the edge of that north end.
I am, but I do stand on that riverbank.
Right.
All fall.
Yeah.
And fish that, so I suppose.
If somebody wandered back far enough in there?
Yeah, right.
Is your concern?
Yeah, because like I said, I and my family use, where that creek jumps out, Fort Moncrief. We stand on that sandbar, chases them. I don't stand on that sandbar and use it. Because I see, I meet him down there. I meet Dwayne down there. Not on purpose. I don't call him up and say, hey, are you fishing tonight? I walk down there and there's somebody standing on the sandbar. There's somebody standing on the bank.
Okay.
And that's during the fall.
I I understand your concerns, Doug, but you go east of Burke or Patterson Wildlife area, that gets pitched almost every day. And it's public hunting on both sides. Right now, there's thousands of hunters in there, but there's probably somebody that fishes right below that dam every single day. It gets a lot of use, so it's the same thing. They're using it. There's also people hunting on that area because it's a public hunting area.
And I've gone from not having public hunting next to me, adjacent to the ground that I live on, to now there's possibility of that, and it increases my risk for injury, is what I'm getting at. In the fall, when I'm out there trying to enjoy the property too, where I live. There, they have to drive to the property and stand on the bank, whereas I just walk down.
Any thoughts from the board or any other questions?
For that, it's a little bit more in taxes than what they pays to. A little, maybe three times any pays.
If if he has a perpetual agreement currently, is there anyone else that could purchase this besides the county or state?
You do, yes.
Yeah.
Doug can purchase it if he wanted to. Anybody can purchase it.
Okay, but it would just take grass and everything?
It was listed, it's still listed on the highway there. It's listed on the open market as a property.
It's just for me, it'd be just a big money stock. Because I gotta I gotta take care of, if I were to purchase that at the price that you've gotten it for, I would have to pay taxes. I'd have to take care of noxious weeds. If you read through that agreement, the landlord's responsible for that. I didn't know about the native grasses. That's why I asked that question. I didn't understand that when I read through it.
As far as the noxious weeds, though, that would be part of the wetland, taking care of that as well?
Yeah, when, I mean, when we purchase our gift of the property, we have to man.
They maintain.
We have the owner.
The owner, they maintain the we the grasses and the weed. I mean, as far as making sure.
Once it's established, the owner, we would take care of it.
Oh, we would?
You, okay.
The Conservation Board staff will take care of it, yes.
So the wetland is only responsible for ensuring native grass?
Establishing it.
Establishment of the grass.
Yeah. They paid for all the seeding, the cost of seeding. They did all the wetland reserve or the wetland ponds. They created that. It was all paid for. None of that, none of that is our responsibility.
So ten years from now, that is overrun with noxious weeds and reed canary grass? They will come back in and reestablish the, I looked, it looked like they had put almost three hundred and sixty pounds of native grass on, and that's, that stuff's expensive.
No, they could probably not reestablish. We would be our.
That'd be on your dime.
Advantage, just like all our other areas we manage.
But the.
Once we purchase it, we seed or whatever, we have advantage.
But NRCS could come in and say, you've got to reestablish that, and that would be on your cost then?
Yes.
Right. And that could be something that could happen every ten years if that, if we get.
Just to give you an example, what Doug's talking about, we have three, three places that have WRP agreements. And they come out and inspect it every year. I usually meet the person that's there, and they'll tell you, well, this needs a burn or this needs whatever. So we do the management as need, we don't wait ten years and, oh, by the way, you need to spend ten thousand dollars and receive that. It doesn't work that way. They inspect it every year, make sure that you're following whatever was in the plan. You meet the room and you look at it and say, yeah, this is fine, or you need to do this, or you need to do that, and you take care of it. So that's what we've done on, we've got a property right north of St. Joe, Maguire Tribe. We've got two properties by the St. Benedict pits that are in WRP. That's what we do on those.
Do you want to have this many native grasses in them?
It's the same same mix that at Decline Track was, as far as the native grass.
That track, north of St. Joe, have the same mix?
No, that is a different mix. I can show you that sometime if you want to see the, I don't have it with me.
No, I understand, yeah. But you have to pay for maintenance on that?
Yes.
Kind of getting back to the nuts and bolts of this, I guess, for financially, what's the revenue you're looking to streams you're getting from this property then, or?
There is no revenue.
There is no revenue stream, okay.
No.
Okay.
Talking about buffer to the river, being any chance of maybe those landlords could buy a two hundred foot buffer strip on that side of that land on the river to push the hundred part back?
You have to re survey it?
Two hundred foot buffer on.
Yeah, you you would add, you would add surveying and all sorts of extra expenses probably. I.
It could be, I mean, money can solve that.
Saying to not what you, you're not likely to buy a hundred, hundred twenty acres, but maybe, you know.
If the county buys this, are they also going to buy the Geist track that's on the north of that, down the road?
We've never looked at that Geist track.
It's never been sold either.
We've never, we've never looked at that, so I can't answer that.
Are there any, are there any other opportunities that would be ways that the conservation reserve funding could be used to create revenue streams? Instead of something that doesn't have a revenue stream with this option? Whether it be another campground or anything like that? I mean, is there any other ways that money could be used better?
I guess our, to answer your question, Kyle, our our Conservation Board, who manages us, they think this is the better. This is one of the projects providing wildlife habitat and recreation for hunting, fishing, hiking. They feel that that's an important part of our program. We don't buy land every year, but this is one that came along with it. It's an opportunity to meet all of our goals. It's protect, good river protection protects river on the west and the south side of the property. So that's why they felt this was a meets our goals and what we're trying to do as a Conservation Board.
And actually, maybe this is another good question, and this would apply to all your properties, I suppose, that conservation would manage. But in regards to protecting the river, if there's down trees or anything like that, do we actually remove them from the river and maintain that? Or is it just left in its natural state, so to speak? I know other sections of the river that have lots of trees in them or debris or whatever you may have. How do we manage that on our properties?
Part of the problem you're you're looking at there, and you're opening a can of worms, because the river is actually owned by the Iowa DNR. So they do, they're the actual owner, if you look at your, of the river. So, you know, as far as who's responsible for cleaning up the river, it's kind of a gray area. I know different years, we've had groups now going that have cleaned up the river primarily in ice over the winter.
Yeah, because I know other property owners that have property along the river that will do what they can to remove trees or things like that.
South of eighteen. Kendall, south of eighteen is navigable, a meander, not, if it's north of eighteen, it's landowner's own stream bed.
Okay.
Okay.
If it's south of highway eighteen, south of the township line, it is.
Consider navigable.
It's a, it's an amble stream. It's not a right.
Okay. I don't know. Any other thoughts or questions from the board here? Otherwise, we've had a lot of conversation here. If not, I would entertain any any motion to the topic at hand. Going once, any? Is there any other questions or concerns that can be answered before a motion is made?
Is there a consideration of making this property bow hunting only?
At this point, no, and the reason for that is if you request wildlife habitat stand funds and accept it, it has to be open to the public for no restrictions at all. So you could not make that a bow hunting area only and still get the money.
So if I have this two hundred foot boundary, no one would be able to go down in that long river and those trees and and hunt deer down there?
If you post, no, that's not correct. If you posted a boundary, whatever it was, it would be no firearms. So you'd shotgun, rifle, whatever. You'd be fine for bow hunters.
Bow hunters would still be able to go.
Bow hunters would still be able, there would be no firearms is the way.
The way, actually, I mean, you wouldn't be able to take shadets down there and hunt deer in those trees.
No, if it if it was no firearms.
Would that still qualify for the funding that you're talking about, or because you just said there couldn't be any restrictions?
I would have to check into that one. If you, if they would let you put a buffer, but are are you looking, I mean, obviously Doug's the one that's interested. Are you looking two hundred yards from what? Or what what line are you looking to?
I would recommend the.
From the hill of the river or from your property or?
Wherever that east bank runs. That'd be my suggestion.
Maybe is that something we can look into? I don't know what your timeframe is here, but is that something we can look into in the coming week? Have this on the agenda next week to get that answer or whether that would qualify?
Two weeks, two weeks.
Would be two weeks, whether that would qualify still for the grant or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then all parties involved here would be have the answers.
Yep. If that is the direction of the board, we could have a motion to postpone for two weeks would be.
I'll make that motion to postpone for two weeks. Can look into that buffer.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to postpone two weeks? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you guys for the discussion. We will bring this up in two weeks again. All right. Next up is setting the salary for planning and zoning administrator and the job descriptions for those three positions which we've talked about and and then posting. those three positions which we've talked about, and, and then posting, so those all kinda tie together, um. Uh, so, we talked a little bit last week, um, which is why we had this on the agenda for the position that's open for sanitarian and, uh, weed commissioner, and we had talked about combining planning and zoning there. Um, the one major thing we had not done is setting salary. Does anyone have any thoughts on that, or?
Currently, the two together are about fifty. Uh, the weed commissioner and sanitarian.
For our current budget?
For our current, current budget.
Okay.
Forty six thousand something plus three thousand something. And it comes up to just under, just shy of fifty. When I have looked at that.
Are you pulling that up, Tim? Perfect. If you could, yeah, if, if you could give us the exact number for those two, that would be great.
Just for a starting point.
Um. Does anyone have any thoughts on, we did put up to twenty thousand dollars in the budget, which we're part of the way through the year, and we won't have someone hired immediately, but, um, even with posting or starting to post today, um, does anyone have any thoughts?
I mean, we set that number not knowing what, what the job description or timeframe, uh, or time commitment was.
Yeah, well, we could have set it on the, um, idea that it was going to be a part-time position.
Correct.
So it's a little different.
Yep.
There's a taxpayer right now. We have somebody doing part of it for nothing. And we have lack of funds in the county, and I'm gonna add another line item to the current budget to pay wages. Have you thought about that?
I definitely have, um, I don't know, can't speak for anyone else, um, I definitely have thought about that. Um, we do have a lot going on with our ordinances in general, and I guess I would say the discussion about wind turbines, solar, CO2 pipeline, I mean, there has been a lot, some that has already been completed, some that could or may still be needing to be completed into the future, and I do think it would do a service to the county to have someone that's dedicated, um, to that, and I think it would help out. I would hope it would help out our secondary road department to free up some more of Doug's time and abilities to focus on being engineer.
Well, it's not like Doug, but it's least of two should be this way.
All the same, the office.
Well, yeah, I mean, that.
The office, the engineer's office, and doing it.
Yeah.
Not just Doug, I mean, but it's.
But that, that still comes at a price. I mean.
You have paid staff in the county doing the work regardless, and that's.
Yeah.
But now you're gonna add, it's not even the same, but.
But whatever we add will be less than what we budgeted for the year. Correct, but that's still not money we're paying out yet.
But right now, the state is on the counties because we're wasting money. If you listen to Chuck D'Asslinger, our governor, they say that we are wasting money at local levels, so I would. Just saying that we have to be careful on what we do, because people are watching.
Because they don't waste any money at the state.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, they're gonna look at us and, and say, okay, now you're creating a new position. Why?
Oh.
You gotta justify it.
Yeah, and I think regardless of which individual is doing it, we have, we will have paid staff at the county doing it one way or the other, um. It's, i- it's not, it's not free to have Doug do it, even if there's not a specific line item for it.
And this was something that has, we've had conversation with Doug, brought to us. This was supposed to be a temporary, couple of month thing until we found somebody else, and then.
Over a decade ago.
For more. So appreciate all of Doug's work in the meantime, um, but.
I'm gonna say I haven't seen Doug charged for his night meetings and everything else.
He's still taking part.
I mean, you expect that we hire somebody that specifically does it, or they're gonna be charged for meetings that they have at night or after?
That'd be part, that'd be part of their responsibilities.
I guess, Roger, are you suggesting we should leave the salary the same and just incorporate that as an addition to the job? Is that what you're?
That would be my recommendation.
That's your recommendation, okay.
Um, Tammy did write down the exact dollar figures we have for weed is thirty-three, twenty-four and fourteen cents. Sanitarian is forty-six, seven ninety-two and eighty-five cents, which is a grand total of fifty thousand, one, one, six, and ninety-nine cents. So just a hair above fifty thousand, um. I guess, there are several kinda components here, and I, and I mean even, I mean, you had, so you talked with Aaron, um, when you talked to the board about this, that, um, he felt it was something that could fit with the position, but it wasn't something he had signed up for when he took it, so I think time-wise and, um, flexibility-wise, I, I do think it's a good fit with these other responsibilities, um. But I, I don't think it's free, whether it's another department that's doing it now or not, I, I guess, I just, I don't think it's currently free, and I don't think it's gonna be free into the future, um.
Well, we did have budgeted twenty thousand for that position. Uh, what if we were to split that in half, make it a ten thousand addition to the, um, weed commissioner sanitarian, and make it even sixty thousand? Uh, because we would be knocking ten thousand down from what we originally budgeted for the position. And then we would be adding that to another position that we are gonna be hiring for, um, so that we're not creating a whole new line item as part of their, you know, job description.
It's still a line item, because you have to pay him separately.
There would still be a separate budget.
Well, it's still, still a separate line item.
It's still a different line item, and we already have the line item anyway, because you already budgeted twenty thousand.
That's what I'm saying, it would, it would be combining those two and.
Yeah, it's already have it.
No, it's a separate one. It's separate, you can't, you can't combine it.
I'm saying, like, his, his, the person's job description would be combining those line items.
They would have mul, they would have multiple, they would have multiple responsibilities. You would
No, it's still three line items.
in effect, combine them into one position, but you still have separate positions.
That's kinda what I would say.
Yeah.
They'd be separate, like.
Donna is general assistants and HR, but they're two different line items, two different budgets.
Yeah.
Yes.
She gets paid out of different line items, just like right now that you're used to.
Right. But, but in eff, but in effect, it's still combined into one person.
That's kinda what I was saying.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
So, what you have to decide then is, what are you gonna pay the weed commissioner, the sanitarian, and the planning and zoning before you even do the job description, or before you even post it?
Well, yeah, and that's, that's why, I mean.
That's why we're having this discussion.
That's why we have these three listed in that order, um. Yeah, I mean, we talked about it, we talked about it briefly last week, but Tammy put them on the agenda, perfect order, I mean, that's, this is what we need to do. We needed to decide what we're gonna do for salary, then approve the job descriptions if everybody's acceptable with those, and then decide to formally post it to get that process started, to get someone new hired, um. So, I guess, yeah, and I, I do think with combining it into, um, another position, I think we can save money that way. I could see even fifteen thousand is still less than what we had, um, budgeted and expected to spend, which would, we would still actually spend less than that this year because of the time portion of the year that we have, um, but I, I think we should make it, um, fair for our chances to get a well-qualified individual who would be able to follow all these things, and actually even, um, if you look at the zoning, um, job description that was provided in our packet, um, it does say there are three items in there, which are in our ordinance, but have not been, um, completed. Um, and, and there's, I'm sure, various reasons for that, but that is something that if we expect those things to be done, y- there would be work associated with that. Um, and I'm sure that's probably why they haven't been done to this point, but if they're in our ordinance, we haven't been following our own, our own rules, so that's stance, and I guess my opinion in that case would be they should either not be in our ordinance, or we should be doing what's in our ordinance, one of the two, um. If you don't follow the rules that you set, that doesn't really look too good to me, um. So, I guess, yeah, the, the two scenarios that have been thrown out with ten and fifteen thousand would bring it to sixty or sixty-five thousand, and a hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents would be the change on both of those. So, I guess I would I would expect that we would get value out of this employee, and I think as a board, we can, um, oversee that to the point where we make it work and make it be a productive thing for the county.
And someone, someone that would be have experience hopefully in managing numbers and, and working with people, and, and something like that, organized individual. Um, you know, I think, I think that's why it has worked, like, um, maybe, maybe I'm stereotyping Doug, but I think engineers tend to be organized people, but, you know, with an engineering office doing this, which it has worked for so long, um. Guess you would hope you'd have, um, have quality applicants for that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, my question, you, you mentioned that they're not doing some things, I'm, I'm think you're probably talking about structures and buildings that are built in the county.
Says issue all occupancy permits and make and maintain records thereof, and then inspection of buildings, land, structures, compliance.
Yeah, on page thirty of our packet is where that job description is, and it specifically has A dry are listed below in our ordinance, and B, C, and H have not been worked on.
I, yeah, but do, do the taxpayers really want that?
Well, I, I guess.
To Kyle's point, then, we shouldn't have it in the ordinance if we don't wanna do it.
I mean, people don't want oversight that's not needed, is what I was trying to say.
People don't like the assessor driving around here.
No, that's the assessor, but, but this is just kinda isn't work.
Right, and I mean, maybe that's a conversation we have in regards to the ordinance and what we actually expect, but this is what's in the ordinance right now, and.
But if you tee off all the taxpayers because you have somebody going out doing things that are really irrelevant to the good of the county, I think it should be taken out of the ordinance, or.
I thought that's part of our discussion on the next line item.
Right.
So you focus on our, our salary, setting our salary?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, we've had discussion here. I'll make a motion that we set the salary for planning and zoning administrator at fifteen thousand for starting, um, wage to be incorporated with the other positions. Is there a second to that motion? Ask again, is there a second to that motion? All right, motion fails for a lack of second. Is there another motion that, uh, member would like to make?
I'll make the motion to set the, uh, free at ten thousand.
Okay. Is, there's motion on the floor? Is there a second to that motion? I, I will second that. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand?
What's the total now, what did you talk, sixty?
Sixty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents would be the total package.
Do you have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second, yeah, so the motion would be open for discussion. I guess I would ask if we think we're going to get the desired applicant we are looking for at this, at this rate, I mean, there is a couple of positions included, I just, I don't know if. And maybe if some of the responsibilities are changed, that could impact the responsibility or what the applicant may be looking at, but, um, I guess that's a question for everyone. If we are comfortable with that, and if we don't get applicants that, um, are desirable, we could potentially change it, but I would, I would rather not go down that road. Any thoughts from the board?
There's gonna be a lot of, there is, and will continue to be a lot of zoning work, I think, in the next couple of years.
Yep. And that would be one of my concerns, I I would wanna make sure that we're not missing something, um. I'm not saying that we are now, I'm just saying I, I do think there is a very clear need going forward, um. So, any other thoughts or comments? If, if not, roll call vote please.
Clap. Jerks.
No.
Black turd.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Sticker.
Yes, motion carried, three to two. Um, then as lightly discussed here, the next item is job descriptions, um. All three are in our packet. Is there any questions on any of those?
Well, I go back to what we were talking about with the zoning administrator. You're gonna have things in the essential functions that are never gonna get done, are gonna actually be detrimental to what the county is really supposed to be doing, why do we have it in there? Or do you think the county should be out looking at all the buildings in the county that's it's never happened in the past, why would we start now? I mean, the assessor goes out and looks at them, I did that. That's for tax reasons, but I don't really fit. I mean, the assessor goes out and looks at them, I did that, that's for tax reasons, but I don't recommend that. Planning and zoning administrator has to go out and look at buildings, I think that.
Well, sometimes for for new construction, especially you're somebody's putting up a building right on the corner. Obstructing. Traffic views um at corners and whatever, I mean, I've seen that happen and.
It doesn't happen out in the country much.
I'm uh no, not very often. But it does.
But that's city, you know, more that's more of the city regulations.
I I guess my concern would be if. If we're not paying attention to what's going on, how do we know what's happening out there is in compliance with our ordinance and if it's not? I mean. I think you kinda need to have a. A basis of understanding to be able to see if there's any things in anything in the ordinance that needs to. Change or should be addressed and and if there's a one-off situation here or there. Is it getting done or is it not getting done and do they have the authority to deal with that or do they not have the authority to deal with that, I mean? I think the, I think having things in our ordinance that are not being done creates a gray area. That is not good for anybody, um. Whether it's our own staff or constituents that are trying, some are trying to follow the rules, maybe a little more specific than others.
As a landowner, I'd like to know what Doug thinks, he's been doing this for ten years, I'd like to know how he feels about it.
About the job description?
Yeah. Whether he feels that this should be done, it states on the. The job description that he has not worked B, C, and H, does he feel that those should be included?
Or eliminated from the ordinance?
Yeah.
Right.
You have any thoughts to share Doug?
Uh, the reason it is not being completed is because when uh the board originally visited with me. About planning and zoning, I said when people contacted me. I'll see here, see Josh. I told them I was not going to be out. Looking for new construction, making sure that things are permitted, I I did not have enough time. And I knew that those things were going on. I said when people I asked come into the office, uh board uh activity, I would take care of that. There's a lot of construction that is completed. Outside the city limits of all the cities in the uh incorporated areas of pursuit county. Uh occupancy, what you're going to be doing is you're gonna be making sure that structures are constructed to some sort of standard. The electrical, the plumbing, fire fire detectors, smoke detectors, you're gonna make sure that. That is built to some sort of standard and I don't know. If that has ever been done, to be honest with you, looking through um. Looking through the past permits, I've never seen a permit, an application for it, I've never seen. A certificate of occup- occupancy issued to a house. So I don't know. The the ordinance was written in nineteen seventy-three. That's older than. A lot of people in pursuit county. It needs to be rewritten.
Yep.
Which means money needs to be spent. The only way you're gonna get it rewritten is you're gonna have to budget some money. More, I think, tens of thousands of dollars, not a couple thousand. Which means, yeah, some planning zoning administrators going to work, planning zoning commissions going to work. The more supervisors. Or. The other option is to eliminate planning and zoning.
It's an option.
Do you know what any of our neighbors do, do they keep record like those?
I have the idea, I I don't know their ordinances, I don't know if they have zoning, if they do not have zoning.
Okay.
There are counties in Iowa that do not have zoning.
Yeah, I know there's a.
Hamilton County doesn't have.
I know there's a couple that don't have zoning, but I think most do.
Washington doesn't zone. Well, my fear is if you follow G and H strictly, you're not gonna have one acreage in the country. That is not owned by the landowner. Left.
G and H?
Well, there's a lot of these old acreages, they're electrical and everything else isn't going to conform to the standards that. We have in here.
Without retaining the new construction, but either way, the the buildings get inspected, I mean, if you build a house, you gotta have it or buy a house, I mean. You gotta have it inspected anyway.
You don't have.
Or you don't have to, you don't have to.
You you can, it's a, it's an option, I mean, that's that'd be for your own inspection purposes.
But if you hire somebody to follow these rules, they're they're going to look at those houses that are out in the country. That are rented out to different people and there's none that are gonna conform, cause most of them have fuse boxes that have fuses in and not circuit breakers. I think you're opening up a whole can of worms that you don't want.
My house till a month ago.
I really do, we have enough empty houses in the country without any more.
Nope, that's good, good points Doug, thank you.
Is it the desire of the board then to eliminate those three items from the job description? Or go back and revise the ordinance and?
I would recommend that we get rid of those three items until you go back and revisit the ordinance.
It's not included.
So by three items, you mean B, C, and H?
C and H.
B, C, and H, yeah.
Which implies that we will revisit the ordinance though.
Yep, that would, um, is that in the form of a motion?
I would make that a motion that we eliminate those three and then at some period in the future that you look at the ordinance.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Alright. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. If that motion carries unanimous, then do we have a motion to approve the job description? As written with those changes or after those changes? Um, or any other points of discussion or anything to? Donna?
I I don't know when to interject this, but we've got. Different educational requirements and we have different Fair Labor Standard Act exempt and non-exempt, so you need to kinda look at that too when you're combining the three positions. Cause I think if you're going to advertise, you need to be clear in what your expectations of this person is or isn't um. Not only with the functions, but. What you're asking or what you're looking for for a person.
Like for example, zoning administrator has a high school degree, environmental house.
Um, has a bachelor.
What you're saying is one person could apply for one portion, that wouldn't qualify for the other portion.
Want that, I think that's what I'm saying, you probably need to streamline, I think what you're taking is three different. Functions that have been done in the county and you're trying to combine it to one, I don't see it flowing real well.
And and I guess you could match up the education requirements, but if all the positions are combined. I would think that to anyone applying, the highest required qualifications would be the. The bar that you would have as a require, I mean, and if. I'm sure people apply for positions every day that they're not qualified for, so that would be for us to sort out as well. Um, if if someone didn't meet the qualifications we were looking for. Um, but it like. When you talk college specific, I mean, for the sanitarium. It does have a bachelor's degree or related um science field or two years of experience, so. Maybe, maybe they had a high school diploma and they did um work as a sanitarium in another county for a couple of years. Or a decade or whatever, um, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't say that. Everybody that applies need to have a, needs to have a bachelor's degree, I think.
But I think you need to make that clear then, just because then you're you're either saying yes to one and people might not apply because of it, yeah, you're gonna get those. That will apply for everything.
Yep.
But I think it's what your expectations are too.
Yeah.
If the minimum requirement that we have in here is a bachelor's degree, that's a minimum requirement.
But it's not, that's the thing.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, it it is, but it's it's not the only defining factor there, um.
You you.
But we have used that in the past for the past hires, so I'm just saying clarify, I don't, I'm not debating what you need to put in there.
I mean, advertise. Must must have.
To have two years of experience, so you are.
Must have a high school diploma, bachelor's degree, or experience is preferred. I mean, that that kind of a wording too, but I.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. I don't know if it's more complicated or not, but I guess. When you talk education or qualifications there, I I think those are spelled out and when you talk about all three. Three job descriptions being one job. I think people that apply to that should be able to read the three job descriptions and see. Whether they qualify or or if not, we would sort that out as. Making the decision on who we hire, um.
So how do you want it listed in the advertisement in the paper? Cause in the advertisement, we don't list the job description, so what do you want it listed as in the paper?
Well, I would want it listed as bachelor's degree is required because that's not what is in the job description.
Yep.
Because otherwise you might have quality applicants that says, well, I guess I don't qualify for that, I mean, I don't have a bachelor's degree.
I think that's what Donna is looking for, is what do you want to find in the paper when somebody's applying, how do you want that listed?
Um, do we reference the place where they can contact to get the job, just the full job descriptions in the newspaper? Ad or online ad and stuff, however?
We usually have it on the website.
Okay, yep, that's what I was, yep. So, I guess, yeah, I I would agree with what Carter said, having the requirement being high school diploma, but. Higher. Uh, what's word it is, education, higher education or other qualifications are preferred, um. But then, yeah, I would make sure we have a reference to the full job description, uh whether it's online or. In person or whatever, or all of the above. And and we can talk about that with the actual posting, which would be next as well, but. Does anyone else have anything to change or comment on in the job descriptions themselves? Alright, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve all three job descriptions.
This is eliminating B, C, and H, or we already voted?
We already voted on that, so that change is already voted on, yep, the the vote or the. Job descriptions that we would be talking about now would be after those changes.
I had motion to approve job descriptions for weed commissioner, sanitarian, budget administrator.
Alright, is there a second to that motion? I'll second that. Is there any further discussion or questions, comments? On the job descriptions? Right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried, four to one, one nay. Um, next is the actual posting for those positions, um. We already lightly talked about the details for educational requirements that we wanna post it, is there any further conversation on that? Otherwise, should we talk about like locations that'll be posted, um?
I think just timeframe, when you want it posted, I think, and yeah, and location.
I think online, I mean, website for sure, that I think that's kinda.
That's default, we always post on the website, isn't it?
Yep, yep, I think we definitely want it there, um. I think there is value in like things like Indeed and stuff, um, some of those other online platforms.
Can I say something quick?
Yep.
Problem with Indeed is we get people from all over the US and we spend a lot of time and money interviewing people that then don't end up coming here. We have that with IT and so at that time, I think, I don't know that we decided not to use Indeed, but we. Are a little bit more guarded on whether or not we should be using Indeed.
Yep, and I I do, I do get that and I I have a visit with Derek, but I think he. And we could call him in if anyone wants, but I believe when I talked to him the one time, he said, you have like. Forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours or something to either accept or reject their application. And if you reject it right away, we don't get charged for um.
Somebody has to monitor.
Or something, so yeah, you would, to do it effectively, someone would need to be monitoring it and kind of. Pre-screening candidates would maybe be a term I would use. Uh, because if, yeah, if you have a hundred people apply, you might only have ten that are valid applicants. You might have people from all over the world that are clicking a button and pasting their resume in there, but I think if you're. If you're screening it and stuff, I think that's an option, or Roger and Doug.
Yeah, w- wouldn't you try locally first and see if you can get some applicants before you go out and you go on Indeed and all those other things? And see if we have a lot of people apply locally from newspaper or websites, our own website. And try to find some kind of qualified candidate here locally.
I was about kinda make similar comment is the qualifications needed for this is not.
They're not extreme.
Right, and so I I think there's plenty of local people or even just connections to the local area that would qualify um for the position.
Yep.
So try that first and if we go a while and nothing happens, well, then we can look at other options.
Yep, we would do that too, Doug.
Uh, you were talking about Indeed and you mentioned that you accept or reject an application. In this case, who would be the person who would be accepting or rejecting some sort of application?
Well, and if we use that, that would be something we would need to decide, um. But if we if we don't go that route, we can worry about that another day.
Because being into the department head, the board, the board is not gonna meet every, you know, couple days to accept or reject applications.
Well, I guess I think it's a valid point, I guess I'd like to hear the answer, cause. It's it's not the first time I've experienced Indeed and I don't believe for. Secondary road positions, it it's worth even advertising.
Right.
Okay.
It would be my recommendation that we do locally.
Posting the paper.
Paper, physically here.
What we're trying to say eventually when their handbook's updated, that if other means are needed, that you can explore that, but just stick with what our basics.
Thank you, that'd be good for starters, yep.
Yep, we could definitely start there, I don't have any issues with that, just trying to bring out the conversation.
Do we wanna set a timeline so that way, you know, we save, you know, continue posting locally for say six months and then?
No, no.
Just say till position is filled.
Till position is filled.
Okay, if but I'm saying like, um, after six months, if we have no applicants from local postings, then we can expand, that's what I was kinda saying.
I.
I don't think we can wait that long for this position.
I think we probably should have a cutoff time, um, because. As a board, we need to make a decision on who we're hiring, so. As a board, we need to make a decision on who we're hiring, so if we're gonna try and, and, and that's maybe another thing to talk about of. Are we doing interviews as an entire board, are we doing a subcommittee, or are we, how are we going to come to a. Recommendation on who we're gonna hire, um.
How has this been done in the past, or not experienced that?
We've had a committee usually H R.
The chair.
Chair.
Auditorium and accepted the last one, and I'm not sure about the previous.
Auditorium, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, and that's something we can talk about too, um, but. Obviously, we need to post it first, but I would think we would probably wanna give it.
Well.
Either.
Sixty days, we got a new board, so let's go for January first or somewhere in there, before you make any changes to.
If we, if we gave people, I don't know.
I think if you post it now, put it, follow our handbook, post it, see what happens and then decide from there, I mean, you might get twenty applicants. You know, in a couple weeks, I mean, you, you don't know.
You just don't know, yeah.
I, I think right now, just see what happens and we don't meet again till November twelfth, you know.
Yeah.
See where we're at then.
See where we're at then.
Even, but even for people that are low, and that's a good point, but even for people that are looking at the posting, if, um. Depending on where they're seeing it, if they, someone tells them to look on our website or whatever, they may not know how long it's been open or whatever, so.
Usually we put in how long applications will be accepted, and then you can have the phrase.
Yeah.
Or, or.
Until filled, because you may get tons of applicants that you've accepted, but you don't hire from that.
Well, and maybe that's something we could say. Uh, till the. I don't know, maybe give people a month or so and say, or until applications are filled, that, that way we kinda have a timeline or a target.
We usually could.
I would say actually applications that you're accepting, and then you can leave that until filled.
Yeah.
But you want a deadline when applications are accepted until, and then you make that determination from that pool.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
So we usually have a date that we pick, you know, um, applications due by this date.
One, no.
So realistically, you're not gonna get into the papers, local papers till the, probably that week for the cuts.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would say kinda early in December.
I was like in December time, it's two weeks in December, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But that's, that gives, what, four weeks from choosing the bid, that's, yeah.
I, I do, if I were you, I'd do the third because then.
Give you time before Christmas.
Right, and then they have time to notify their other employment, and then can start, if you wait too long, then it's later before they can start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Draining out.
Right, I, I would agree with that.
And you're gonna have those board members, so I'm not trying, but you could maybe include them at that point instead of waiting.
And, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
After the election, they wouldn't officially be acting in their roles, but we would know who it is for sure, and, yeah, I would.
But otherwise, I don't think Ben has signed up for four months, December third.
Yeah, I, I think we probably.
He would appreciate the third, so.
I, I think a month is a reasonable time, um, or a little, little over a month, I think that would be reasonable time, and I think that does give us some. Opportunity to work with it before, um, the holidays.
With holidays is the other thing that people aren't gonna have too much thought about this around holidays, so don't cut it too short.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why the third would be helpful.
I. Yeah, I think the third would be a good target as well, um, anything else as far as structure?
Uh, my question would be, um, posting costs, is this coming out of ours or would this becoming, what, what budget would the posting costs come out of?
It would come out of his department, yeah.
I think usually the department.
Yeah.
So that'd be.
With all three, with three of them.
So the department, weed commissioner department, or sanitarian department, all three?
Uh, honestly, it probably should, it probably should just come out of the boards because they report to the board, and we're gonna have three different positions, so we're hiring for a position.
That, that's.
I mean, at the end of the day. It probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference, it's the same tax dollars, so.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that's clarified, so we didn't come back and say, who's paying for that?
I mean. Yeah, it's probably a good question to get answered, and is there any concern?
Take it out of the board.
Yeah, I, I think it's just simpler that way.
Or why you're just confusing it with three different departments, just take it out of there.
Yeah.
Take the third bit out of here, third bit out of here, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, any other thoughts or questions here? Otherwise, Tammy, do you wanna kinda overview the points that you have written down in your notes there?
Sure. Yeah, so as far as advertising, we're gonna follow the handbook as far as posting, we're gonna set a deadline for applications for December third or until filled. Um, the advertisement costs are gonna come out of the board of supervisors budget, as far as, um, advertising requirements, it would be higher education or other. Require, or other requirements are preferred, I don't mean requirements, or other.
Or, um.
Higher education, qualifications, yes.
Other qualifications, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, did I miss anything?
We're gonna have a line in there, um, giving them information of where they can go to find the job descriptions.
That's part of it, that's that we usually, yeah.
That is all part of the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, is there a motion?
And we don't need a motion for that, I don't think.
No, just to do the posting and proceed with all that, like, that you have in your notes, um.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll make a.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there?
And then what is your motion?
To do what's in your notes.
Um, to.
To do all of that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Otherwise, I'll second, um. Any further discussion, or does anyone want the motion repeated, like, so Tammy already read her notes, so.
I understand.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye aye.
Any oppose, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, alright, thank you for the conversation.
Yes, Donna.
The, who, actually doing it, getting the template to somebody, or you want me to, or how are we advertising, who's doing that?
What template are you?
Well, like the template for what our ad is, that we usually use, and then getting that to the newspapers.
Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
I, I'm just asking, I'm more than willing, I mean, I've done it historically, but I'm thinking since you guys have done some adjustments, I'll send a draft and then.
Yeah, if. Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, thank you, thank you everyone. Uh, next up is the Walmart pharmacy rebate offer. Uh, talked about this some last week. Is there any comments or Doug or Donna you would like to make, or Tammy, questions from board?
This was discussed last week.
Yeah.
Can, can you maybe summarize where, where we're at from that?
Where we're at.
Or, or where that discussion led to, or, or, or can you maybe give a summary of what this is doing?
Well, the, uh, Walmart, in an effort to lessen. This is my understanding, lessen the amount of work that their, uh, underwriters have to do. As far as issuing a credit for pharmacy, um, they have, uh. Made it available to people to just accept one hundred dollars per contract month, uh, credit. Uh, currently, there is a sheet there, um, for Cassoot County, you can see for calendar year twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-three. What our quarterly credits were. And it averaged to be eighty-six dollars over that two-year period, eighty-six dollars per, uh, member per month. Per employee per month, so they're offering this, uh, beginning Jan- January one, uh, to just, uh, give a. Consistent one hundred dollars, uh, per contract per month instead of the variable.
Okay.
And this is to the county, right, not to the members?
This would be the.
This is a credit that we, we have been receiving from Walmart.
Self-insured.
Okay.
And we will continue to receive pharmacy rebates, it's just whether we wanna have them do their calculation every month.
Okay.
And see exactly what according to our usage, our employees, um, and get a rebate, or whether we wanna go with a consistent one hundred dollars per month.
Which looks like that would be greater than what we're currently receiving then?
Five fourteen now.
We averaged in the last four, or last two years eighty-six dollars per month per employee. And they are offering to give us one hundred dollars per month per employee.
Okay. And, well, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Um, and yeah, that, that does sound good from the eighty-six, um, which. If you do what we did in twenty twenty-three, we would have been at ninety-eight point seven five, um, so we would have been. Almost neck and neck with that hundred dollar fixed rate, um. If we enter into this, will they still show us the chart of what our actual would have been? Cause I think you said last week that this was a one-year agreement, so I guess is that our. Option to review whether it was actually positive or detrimental to the fund, um.
Um, I believe we can probably request that report, I don't know though, because again, Walmart is trying to. Reduce the amount of work that their underwriters are doing, um, they are looking at their whole. Base, when they determine the hundred dollars, I think Michelle said that it was actually ninety-nine dollars and some odd cents, and they rounded it up to one hundred.
Okay.
I, I'm sure they're going to be, uh. Reviewing it, there may be people that choose not to take the, the, uh. The consistent. The constant pharmacy rebate, so I, I don't know, I would have to ask that question.
And I, I definitely could see the advantage of knowing what we're gonna get and, and having that be fixed, but if, if our average. Pharmacy rebate is trending up, um. I guess it's a risk reward of, do we capture more or do we lose potential?
We've never went over a hundred.
Yeah, we have, the last two quarters. And the, the quarter bef, the quarter before that was ninety, so we had, this last year, quarter one was eighty-three, then quarter two was ninety-eight, quarters. Three and four were both a hundred and seven, so I mean, if.
They averaged it for the year, though, I don't think it's over a hundred.
It's ninety-eight point seven five, so I mean, even at that, we're. We're within a dollar and twenty-five cents of what they're offering us, and our last two quarters. We're exceeding what they're offering us, so if that trend continues to go up, what if the, I mean.
What, what drives the rebate, I mean, as far as why some quarters are much higher, that, that's, that's a good pharmacy usage?
Usage, yeah, it depends on like our.
So, I guess, just looking at the chart. If the last three quarters here have been hired. After making changes to the health insurance that we did and people being off and et cetera, it has nothing to do with that, okay.
Has nothing to do with that. We. Are we being recorded right now?
Mm-hmm.
It depends on our dynamics of our coverage, and we're gonna have some. That it's gonna be all or some that's higher, but based on what they know, but it's our dynamics of who we're, who's utilizing.
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And, and what, what drugs are you?
And things change, and it is something annually that can be reviewed, I mean, I just don't, it's gonna be part of the discussion, I think we're entering in, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay, this isn't, isn't gonna have an effect on administrative costs and stuff like that. This is just purely for the, the pharmacy credit and stuff, because it sounds to me like they're trying to lessen their administrative. Burden on doing the, the rebates and stuff, um, is that gonna affect the?
Well, it's, it's not administrative, but it's work that they do.
Right, right.
I don't, I don't foresee our administrative costs being reduced.
I didn't, I didn't see anything in their information that talked about reducing admin costs.
Well, make a motion to accept the Walmart pharmacy rebate offer.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Um. Roll call vote please.
Plath. Jax.
Yes.
Wafter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yeah.
Stacker.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, alright. And yeah, if we can get the numbers for how this actually performs when we get farther down, I would appreciate seeing those.
I will ask Michelle if that, uh, if those reports will be available.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Alright, um, next up is construction and right-of-way.
Yes, we have received a request, uh, from G S. Gunter to, uh. Place a tile through property right to the east of their home, uh, going through one hundred seventieth street. Uh, this is all according to Cassoot County policy, uh, there's some made some improvements to drainage, uh. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Motion approved.
Second, okay, I have a motion second on the floor.
Did you second it?
Josh said, Josh said, you're good.
I'm sorry.
Um. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye aye.
Any oppose, say nay, motion carried unanimous. And then.
And then the second one, we are, uh, right now working with, uh, Gina Halberts, uh. Gina's mother or grandmother, if we can get your signature back there.
Thank you.
Owns property to the south of two hundred eightieth street, uh, Gina and her husband, uh, Shane. Uh, had purchased in a building, a home on the acreage right there where seven oh one is at, uh, they would like to hook up to that well. And, uh, put a water line underneath of the roadway, um, we're working on a agreement for that. Uh, we've done this before, it's just a matter of getting signatures really, um, but, uh, if they would bring in everything. Is anyone on the board have concerns about giving them a verbal approval before the, uh, formal approval of the board supervisors?
I don't.
Alright, thank you.
Is there any, is there anything we do different for like a water line versus a tile crossing or anything, or like, just in general, is there any specifics to that?
No, we're, we're trying, this particular s- position, um, we are, um. Trying to get the location so it's near field entrances, so we would never reduce any kind of cover over that, uh, to.
Okay.
Possibly affect any kind of a freezing, but, uh, it'll get recorded, uh, it'll be their responsibility.
Okay.
It's just a matter of getting the signatures in.
Okay. Sounds good, anything else for the right-of-way?
No, there's no other requests for construction or right-of-way.
Alright, we can remove the discussion.
Alright, um, I've had some employees and, uh. In the road department, uh, we have, all employees have received, uh. Flexible benefit enrollment, and this is an opportunity to have money, uh, be saved. Um, prior to it being taxed for, uh. For income taxes, and I've had some employees ask if the board is planning on changing any kind of health insurance. Last year, with the higher deductible. Last year with the higher deductible, that happened after this enrollment, which did not allow the employees to save more money, uh, before that. So any does does the board, could the board share with, uh, secondary road employees, um, what your plans are for health insurance this next year?
So anyone on the board have any thoughts there? Otherwise, I guess I did a lot of research and numbers and stuff last year. I do think having a high deductible plan option would be beneficial. Um, I'm not saying we should get rid of our current option, but, uh, I do think that's something we should offer to our employees. So I do, I guess my opinion is I think that's something we should consider as a board, but, um, each employee could still make a determination which route they would like to go if it was the current plan we offer or the other one.
Well, I I agree that, you know, we could open up and offer a high deductible plan, but if we're gonna do that, we need to get working on getting information on that and, um, because before too long, we'll be getting to the first of the year and we need to start having those discussions for budget.
Yeah, um, I guess in, this isn't directly budget, but it does tie in there. Um, actually, I think Molly was one of the ones that asked me a question about plans for budget workshops and I thought at that time I had told her after the election, I think we can have a conversation about budget workshops and start having some of those conversations, maybe health insurance being one of those first topics, because we would at least know the results of the election and those other board members could be communicated with to have time to do some research and ask any questions they may have or whatever too. So I think that conversation is near, but we're just not quite there yet.
Is there any information outside of our cost, um, and things like that that we can get from Wellmark, uh, the layout of what a high deductible plan would look like, so we can kind of have some information on, uh?
They won't have numbers till.
That's what I'm saying, like, other than numbers, is there anything, any information that we can get from them to kind of get this started?
Oh, yeah.
Um, how the the plan works and things like that, you know, cause I think education is a big thing for our employees, so they know, you know, prior to us having the numbers, what this plan would, you know, look like for them in in usage and things like that. Is there anything we can get from Michelle, um?
Last year.
We talked about it in July. We talked about having her come up and talk to employees, but for some reason,
Yeah, yeah, we got.
My. Yep.
The decision was made to not do that. Um, we're we're almost to November. And if we're going to talk about those types of things, it is gonna take education. It's gonna take somebody on Cas- on Casoot County staff to champion that effort. And these were things that were discussed and we had a lot of answers or a lot of questions that were not answered. So that's how we started talking about getting a third-party vendor. That's that's part of the whole thing and I'm making the assumption, but the time that it takes to educate everybody is not going to change. And we're talking six months is what we're talking in July.
I think a lot of.
The the employees, what the employees want, is it going to, is there gonna be higher deductible? A high deductible plan, you gotta health savings account. Now, if that's the case, maybe somebody is going to. That's gonna affect their flexible benefits, because they're gonna start contributing to a a health savings account instead of the flexible benefits. If if the board is talking about that, these people are making their budget for twenty twenty-five. And that's that's one of the problems is when they're making their budget for twenty twenty-four, they were thrown a big curve ball. They dropped off the table. And they want answers. And if the board can't give answers, then just say you can't get an answer. If you, it it it's a, it's a question.
They wanna know if you're gonna raise their deductible again. That's what they wanna know.
And if you're gonna pay more money out of their paycheck to the premium, they wanna know those two things right now.
Yes, that's. That's the question.
Yeah.
It's a fair question.
Yes.
It is, and we had a lot of conversations about educating staff on our employees on the options with high deductible health plans. And then the response was always, well, you can't have that conversation without having specifics with numbers. Well, we can't have specifics with numbers till we get to after the first of the year with Wellmark. So it was a constant circle and that's where we never made any any headway, because it was always you can't do this if you don't have this and those timings don't line up. So you either need to educate on the principle of the plan, which I thought would have been good, but then every time we had that conversation, it was you can't educate on the principle, because we don't have specifics. Nobody knows what it's gonna look like.
But you didn't add in the third factor. You got, you have to know what the raises are going to be and how it's gonna affect every employee.
So you can't go to a high deductible plan without addressing wages.
So I, in in this whole conversation, I I, this is with Tammy this past week, hoping to have the compensation board meet in November as opposed to in January and that way.
December, they usually meet in December.
They usually meet December, but in November, either way, earlier.
A month early.
A month earlier than normal, so that that's over, we can have an idea of where we're going with salaries. At least by by Christmas time, we would know that. And Wellmark gets us their numbers. We'll have the salaries kind of set and where we wanna go with it. We can figure out insurance then, and those are kind of the two big things. Otherwise, everything else is gonna I mean, yeah, there's little other things to talk about, but, um.
Those are definitely.
By January, we're going to know a lot more number specifics, as far as what direction the board is wanting to go, because then we will have our general numbers for general basic and and rural basic and stuff for where we're gonna be sitting there as well.
Can I ask that question a different way?
Right?
Are you thinking it's a possibility you're gonna raise that employees are gonna have to pay an increase in insurance again this year? Are you thinking that that's a possibility? Don't have to give me an answer yes or no, but is that on your radar? That's what employees wanna know.
Can you look at fund balances for all of it?
The fund balance of the self, uh, insurance fund, July one twenty twenty-four was twenty-two million, six hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, the fund balance, October one of, uh, twenty twenty-four was two million, six hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. So we're right at that forty-five thousand. We we had gained forty-five thousand dollars.
So relatively stable.
Yes.
Okay. What was the first date you said?
July one.
July.
The fiscal year, we began with two million, six hundred eleven
Yep.
thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And what was the two million, six, five, nine? What was the last three?
Two hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
And that's for, um, October one?
October one.
Okay, I mean.
And of expectation possibly in, uh, November, December, where the usage might go up. People having that deductible, so try and get stuff done before the end of year potentially.
Hard to say, but, um. Yeah, as far as, and I've said this before, as far as general direction, personally as a board member, no.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But but I don't, I I would rather leave things as they are. We made those changes last budget. And that was not my intention to do it in stages.
Okay.
But I mean, that that's just me. That's not the board, of course, but that's, I guess that's all I can say.
Thank you for answering that.
Yeah, how much seven eighteen has restricted revenues or what, what about? What are you gonna cut to make the budget order? What's your first thing? I'm just throwing it out there as a question for you three.
That's, that's honestly, that's where I hesitate answering what if, what if, what if right now, because until we really get there, I don't, I don't know how, I mean, we could talk, I I hope I don't wanna do, I hope this isn't needed, or I hope that isn't needed or whatever. But until we actually get there, I don't, I don't know what the numbers are gonna look like. Um, I would hope that with changes we made this last year, um, to our plan and all of those pieces, um, I would hope that that has a positive impact on our fund balance and as of right now, it looks like it has a slight positive impact, so that's good.
We also don't know what the insurance rates are gonna come out with for, so.
Right. If if we could maintain what we have and add the option of a high deductible plan, I think that would be a good step to give employees another choice, but, um, I I, yeah, I can't, I don't know until we see numbers and that's, that's where I hesitate the most. Looking into a crystal ball, because none of us have it. Um, I don't know. Any other thoughts?
I mean, given the information that you have, do you expect revenue to decrease? Do you expect revenue to stay the same? I I'll tell you right now, the road department, the road use tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-five totaled seven million, four hundred sixteen thousand, twenty dollars. That's what we are estimated to receive. Uh, road use tax right now for fiscal year twenty-six, and I'll be using for budgeting, is seven million, four hundred seventy-three thousand and, uh, fifty, fifty-one dollars. So the road department, which is about seventy percent of the of the revenue that the road department fund, the road fund receives, does not, is not gonna be affected. Does the board feel there's gonna be changes in your revenue?
I would think we would have more funds available if we proceed with the TIF urban renewal conversations that we've had in that.
That's property, that's not property tax.
That's that's dollars that would be available.
But that's only for, that's only for rural, that's.
And that's a, that's a whole separate subject. First thing you have to do is borrow money.
I get that.
And, uh, pay back money. That's, that's not operating budget.
No, but that's.
Uh, is so when your operating budget, do you feel your property tax revenue is going to be increased, decreased? I mean, is there some something out there that's telling you that assessed values are going down? Is there something out there that's telling you that that you are, your revenue is gonna be drastically reduced?
I would assume just based on an educated guess, that our revenues would be slightly higher. But I don't, as far as property values.
With the. With the productivity factor on farmland and that being a rolling average, the year that we would be adding versus subtracting, I won't, I don't know where that's gonna put our average. That's gonna drop it down a little bit with prices.
Is, is the assessed value for property is already.
Two, that's, you're two years behind.
Yeah, you're talking, you're talking multiple years ahead right now. The assessed value for properties right now has been completed.
Right.
For the fiscal year that you guys are gonna be budgeting for.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of.
You're talking about the drop in, that's gonna be two years.
Yeah.
Two year, two-year assessment.
That's gonna be, that's a statewide thing to you.
Well, I'm I'm aware of that, but.
Well, I I just, this, I mean, is there something that you can give employees? I mean, Carter at least said his intention is to not affect them, which I'm taking that it is not going to change the plan to make a higher deductible and not going to make people with family plans contribute more money. That's been said by one board member. Does anyone else have anything else they wanna contribute?
I've already contributed my thoughts. I guess you didn't summarize them, but I think adding a high deductible plan option is valuable to the county and to the employees that would use it.
But that's, that's, yeah, that's in the, that's, you know, it it could happen. And that's fine.
And that doesn't affect everybody.
And that's fine. That's enough. Uh, construction, next week, uh, uh, Merriman's plants are to pour the bridge deck down at Gunter's. Um, in fact, they're planning on a week from today. We are replacing some culverts on B fifty-five right now uh, near Barry Simpson's house, and we have one more, uh, culvert. This would be west of the river on B fifty-five that we are going to replace. Uh, we gotta watch weather right now, so I cannot tell you when we're gonna actually do that. We are working with FEMA to, uh, work on the disasters and getting, uh, some things taken care of with that. Uh, mowing, working on roads if we will, we're receiving rainfall. Uh, that's a welcome rainfall. We can get, uh, get some roads maintained. Uh, they they are very, very dry. Uh, we also are cleaning some, uh, silt that has been in ditches. And we're also starting to remove debris that washed to road ditches uh, with the rains in May and June. We're starting to get those removed. Uh, received a, a resignation from a Titanca operator yesterday. Um, we will be not asking if anyone wants to transfer to that, uh, position and then getting it advertised. The Bancroft, Sway City and Laverne advertising, uh, actually, it'll be Sway City and Laverne. We are transferring an employee from Sway City to Bancroft uh, to replace Phil, who just retired. Uh, the advertising will start on those three positions. Uh, get it in the paper next week. Um, zoning, I guess that's all that I have from roads. Zoning, last night the planning and zoning commission, uh, met and they, um, made a report and I'll read this and I'll give it to Tammy for her records, but, uh, this goes to the board of supervisors dated October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. The Casoot County Planning and Zoning Commission met at five P M. Today. The commission reviewed and discussed Casoot County's proposed urban renewal amendments consistency with Casoot County's general development plan. After discussion, the commission concluded that the plan is consistent with Casoot County's general development plan. Submitted on behalf of the Casoot County Planning and Zoning, and it's signed by Brian Toole, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Uh, I do have a couple of requests, I guess, um, with the salary of the zoning administrator. Could we start that and have a third of it go to Lisa, a third of it go to Luke, and a third of it go to me until the next person is hired?
That would have to probably be a voted on change.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I don't feel comfortable receiving it all.
No, I I mean, as far as voted on change on making that change on the agenda.
I think it was already voted on to make it a ten thousand dollars per year. So. I think it was already voted on to make it a ten thousand dollars per year. So. Is that not correct?
I would, I thought that pertained to the job description, but I mean, I don't know. Is that an action that the board can even take right now? That's, that's all I'm saying.
All right.
I guess.
Not saying I'm opposed to that.
We can put it on, or we can set, we can set an effective date for the salary that was voted on previously. Because I guess when we were having conversation, I said several times um that we wouldn't, we would have less than what we allocated because this, that wouldn't be, that position wouldn't be filled until the new person was hired.
The agenda item specifically states set salary for planning and zoning administrator. Um, I believe the motion was to set the salary for the zoning administrator and I guess my understanding was that it was set and I think I am still the zoning administrator unless the board would like to remove me from that position immediately.
So I think it is only right that you would put it on the agenda next week to discuss it in bouncing two dollars or two weeks somehow.
And that was my only point around here.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I would suggest you put that on the agenda and we'll make a decision at that time about the salary for the zoning administrator that we have presently.
Is that the desire of the board to address that in a couple of weeks or set the effective date when?
That's for discussion in two weeks.
Well, it was on the agenda today, so.
Well, you set that. That's, we did that, except that ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. But there was no discussion about the effective date.
Is everybody okay if I put that on the agenda for two weeks?
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we will address it then. So in that case, for payroll that's getting done for the two weeks between now and then, I'm sure that would be a question Melissa would have.
Well, you're not gonna make a deci- decision till November twelfth, so nothing's gonna happen till after that.
Right.
Okay, we can address it then, I guess.
Right. Correct.
That's how I understand it.
Well, I would say that effective today, the zoning administrator's position is compensating. I, I don't know. Uh, you have, you also amended to amending the zoning ordinance. When would you like that to begin? Is that something you would like the current zoning administrator to begin the process? Uh, is that something the board is intending to do or is in order to amend the ordinance, there is a process?
What is the next step in our process?
Well, if you are, you would be sending it to the planning and zoning commission to uh for their recommendation.
I think that would be appropriate.
I guess my thought with that would be if we start the process and send something to them and then have someone new that gets hired here in a month or two or whatever, they could potentially be walking in in the middle of something and have to catch up on all the conversations that already happened to that point. I would rather the new person starts fresh and we say this is on, on your radar to as a task to accomplish. I don't, I mean, it's been this way this long. I don't know if another couple of weeks or a couple of months is gonna change the world.
Just we have an moratorium for a set amount of time as well.
That's for solar.
We made a motion to date. I think should just do the function of the motion and turn it over to planning and zoning.
Does the board supervisors, will they be paying for the uh notice of a public hearing? Or you want that to come out of planning and zoning? There will have to be a public hearing for the planning and zoning commission. A man that I believe.
There would be. Any thoughts?
Didn't pass, it always come out of planning and zoning.
Is that, is it a budget to do so?
The, the moratorium, I think, was actually paid for by.
Was it by supervisor?
Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I'm not sure. I can't remember, but.
The zoning, planning and zoning advertisements came out of, of board supervisors.
It could be. I'd have to double check.
I will double check on that.
Any other thoughts? Or we can look at each other in silence?
As far as where the money's coming out of?
No.
When are, when are we dealing with it? Cause we talked about that briefly during the motion, but there was never a date set for that either. I guess I thought the conversation was that that would be a next step to complete, but not immediately.
I would even question whether it's on the agenda to do that. Whether it's a violation of open duty blocks.
That's where.
I don't see, I don't see anything about amending zoning ordinances.
No, no, and that's where I, I guess if I had.
That's where I confused what we're.
If I had been.
There was a motion and a second and it was acted upon about deleting the occupancy portion of the ordinance.
Well, that was just.
So that was on their job description.
That was, that was not the motion.
That was the job description.
That was job description.
Um, I, I don't.
That was, so you're, you're not including those on the job description?
What are you happening in there?
That was what that motion was doing. There, see what Tammy's.
Gotta find the right one. To eliminate B, C, and H on job description and set the period in the future to look at the ordinance.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding. That was something we would.
So, does Donna understand that for sure, I wonder? Okay, you might wanna make sure, cause if she gets that job description out and it contains it, I thought the discussion was that it was part of the ordinance, the new employee would.
Okay, no. It would, it would be in the ordinance um until changes were made to the ordinance, but it's currently in the ordinance and not being completed. So we were removing it from the job description.
Okay, very good.
So, I don't, I don't, and I will, it, it is not.
Well, that is, if that is the case, that's.
Yeah, it is not on the agenda to change our ordinance today, so I don't think that is something we can send to planning and zoning or anything else today.
All right, no, then we don't do that.
That's where I was confused, okay.
Okay, um. That is all that I have for the day.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Doug.
Anything, anything else from the board?
Doug, real quick, uh, could you, do you have any bracing as far as culvert versus the cross pipe in the office there? Yeah.
Um.
Difference.
Doug Crouch gave me some information. I had it last week.
Could you send that to me?
I do not have it now, so.
Could you send that to me though?
Sure.
I appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, anything further for Doug?
What, what size?
Just uh under the road project.
Okay, very good.
Yep, thanks, thanks Doug.
Uh, twenty four inch C M P, isn't that?
Twenty four inch.
What do you got?
C M P.
Twenty four inch C M P versus
Versus.
Twenty four inch.
Eighteen.
Or eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen cross pipe.
Or, no, sorry, twenty four inch reinforced concrete.
Reinforced concrete with intakes.
With intakes, but then of the um culvert would just be eighteen.
The culvert's twenty seven dollars for that, or last cost.
Okay, and, and that be installed?
No, that's just price of the culvert.
Just material?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have some made out of concrete. I just got.
There you go.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Larry.
It was hide behind my computer.
Eighteen to sixteen dollars for it. It's what we charted this year. Okay.
What? Who is we?
Sioux County.
Oh, okay.
That's for an eighteen inch.
Yep, and then the bands are ten dollars for, no, wait a minute, you're thirty dollars for a band and forty eight dollars for twenty four.
Okay. What was the twenty seven dollar for that one?
Concrete.
Twenty four, that's.
Okay, is that twenty four inch?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make sure I'm not looking for it yet.
Twenty four inch R C P?
C M P.
Okay, so concrete versus C M P would still be another difference.
Yeah, I don't have concrete prices.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all C M P.
Yeah, it's all C M P.
Okay.
I think concrete prices, they're, they're so variable that I don't know that anybody's gonna give you anything to order.
Okay.
All right, um. Now we're up to drainage here. First.
Marge has been waiting.
Yeah, thanks for waiting patiently. Um, D B forty televised main tile and discuss next steps for repair, Carter.
Yeah, so I put this on the agenda. Um, I don't know if we'd have a little break or not, but um to hook it up to the bigger screen or not to, but I can send this to you too as far as, so we did get the televising done for the tile going through town over in Whitmore and um there's a lot of tree roots all throughout it. Um, and the problem is, Nathan Schmidt said he'd be available by phone if we needed to ask questions, but um.
How long is the video?
Oh, the video, it's all in sections.
Oh, yeah.
So there's maybe a dozen videos that are several minutes long, but um. But the worst part was between third and fourth streets, which is not the worst part we had anticipated. Um, but there are bad spots all throughout that tile um where trees were taken out before and where just existing trees are. Um. So, the bad part is the city of Whitmore redid that road. Uh, I mean, it's a new road. Fairly new for portions of that. Um, and where do you dig? Where do you start? What do you do? That's why I put on the agenda and just there's several blocks there that there's still water sitting in there.
Really?
And it hasn't rained in how long? So.
Plus months.
Um.
We're supposed to get a bunch of rain tomorrow?
I know, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to get rain tomorrow, but so we need to, I mean, we can continue to jet it and talk with Nathan. He's like, you can jet it every year, but he says, I'm sure that's what has kept it alive. Um, but you're gonna do that every year um until you do something there. You know, whether you whether you line it with something, whether you, I don't know, but.
There is, eh, what size is it?
It's a fifteen and it goes into an eighteen and.
I think is the lower section maybe even bigger than that?
Nine, very, at the very end, it, it gets a little bigger, um, but.
What's this city of Whitmore on?
I don't know. Um, I don't know what they're wanting to do. I could go to the city council meeting there and show them
I think that.
what situation is. And I, and I was gonna hopefully wanting to do that anyway. Um.
Cause you're gonna tear up their street.
Oh, I know.
Fix it right.
I know.
And then they're gonna have a bunch of costs.
And the goal was to figure out where is the problem tile area and.
The whole thing is.
It's, yeah.
But is it drainage district town?
Yeah.
But they're.
They're on the schedule.
But it's gonna affect them.
The city's gotta pay a portion for the drainage district.
And they're gonna have to pay to fix.
But yeah, then, then you start talking damages on a road that goes all the way through town.
Before you do anything, go talk to Marge, see if it's been reclassified, who's gonna pay for it. At least have the knowledge there before you talk to somebody about who's gonna get stuck with a bill.
Right.
Before you do anything.
Yeah.
Have Marge run that.
Have the, have the classification.
Have the classification run off and explain to people who's gonna pay for it.
Right.
Cause it's only the town people that are gonna pay for it.
It's not.
It's not gonna be that way.
It's not because it comes in from the west. Um.
Most, most of the acres would be out of town, I'm sure.
Yeah, so.
And that's not really fair to landowners that are paying to repair a street that their tile goes under.
Property owner in town's gonna pay a proportion.
Correct.
But if, if we go to drainage laws, the person that caused the damage should pay for repairs and the trees that are there should pay for the repairs. If you really wanna go to drainage law. So you're gonna have to do a lot of thinking on that one.
Fine tune negotiations.
Yes. Fun, ain't it?
Yeah. Well, maybe I'll visit with Marge a bit about it then.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, and go to the city and explain what's going on. I mean, I, Dan Albert was over there when we were over there this spring Sunday and he is aware of these issues, but he's a major.
I think one possibility we could try um instead of just going in with a jetting head like they were trying the spring when everything was underwater.
Yeah.
Um, like we talked there while we were in town. Um, Empire has tree root cutters that actually fit inside the pipe and they can go down with that when the water's low. So I mean.
But that's not gonna fix the issue.
It, it's not gonna fix the issue, but any trees that are gone, if their roots are dead, they may not come back, but the ones that are still there and still alive, those would come back most likely.
Right.
But even if you get it opened up, it, it might be something you monitor every year or two and if we have a really wet year, they may not grow that bad. If we have a really dry year like we have the last couple, they might have the entire thing filled. Um, so.
I can get an estimate on the cost of that.
Of jetting?
No.
With, with the cutter?
Cutter, cause a jetting is just used for.
So it's, it's the same machine. It's just they put, it's basically a circle with a, a, it's a big kind of bandsaw basically.
They cut it bigger.
But they cut, but it goes on the end of the jetter.
Right.
So they still have the jetter to push and turn and all that. Um, but they also need to televise from the other direction to make sure the cutter's doing its job. So you have to have both rigs at the same time and you have to have the water low enough that you can, you can manage the work.
Like that, that, it's still underwater and that's what it looks like.
Yeah, I, I've jetted through stuff like that and next year it's plugged.
Yeah.
Just a waste of money.
That's, that's what I'd be concerned about, but a lot of those roots probably came in when it was dry the last couple of years.
But sometimes a jetter can't even make it through the roots.
No, and that's where they would, the cutter would be able to do better because it would actually cut them off at the edge of the pipe and then the water blowing out of the jetter would shoot pieces out, so it should be able to flush it. If you got decent tile.
I've seen them through the refuge area where we just stalled.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Yeah, it's not gonna be a.
I don't know if there's any options for even a liner or anything like that. I don't know where you would even start.
I don't, I don't think they make a liner for fifteen. It's probably, they might for twenty four.
I know they do for like city lines, cause they actually had a company doing their something.
They had the sewer, sewer systems getting lined over there this spring, but.
Is that a six inch?
It's smaller, yeah.
Yeah, it's smaller.
I, I don't know about.
Or even a cost on that. Maybe you could get in contact with the company that did theirs and see if they can even do it or what's that price tag?
Is that, is that sewer?
But you're still gonna dig a forty foot hole.
Right.
No, I think that's.
Oh.
I think they were working out a manhole.
Yeah, but you gotta.
Good that I'm gonna go too.
It's gonna be at least.
I'll make the decision, tell.
All right.
Yeah, I don't.
It's gonna be like twenty foot length of pipe.
No. I think that's.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to have a a hole dug deep enough so you can get twenty foot length of pipe in. It's not good at band though.
That, they're they're kinda funny, I don't think they dug up the streets hardly at all.
I don't, I don't think they shove sections in and push it, I don't, it's not like boring, I.
Yeah, it it was more of a, they were, they were in the in the manholes and it was just being fed.
They went around the corner?
Yeah.
But I don't think.
Cause I think.
Twenty four is gonna do that.
I think, and I, like I said, I'm not a, not well versed on this at all, but I think it's like a hot flexible material that pushes and the inside kinda rolls out. And sticks to the outside and then it keeps going and then they get to the end and cut it off and have it opened up.
It smelled bad.
It, it's, yeah, it's, it's a whole process, I don't, I'm never gonna profess to be an expert on that, but.
Well, then you go to the, it's a cost more than digging it up and fixing it, that's the next thing.
And what condition is the tile that's there right now?
And any interconnection that goes to that tile will not be there anymore.
Oh, yeah, you would have to have all those cut open, which they would have to do that for your private sewer connections, I would think too, so they got that way to do that.
I'm sure the private drains, some of them might be hooked to that tile. Not through sanitary sewer, but.
But I'm saying for their, for their sanitary sewer, they would have had private connections there too. So they, they would have to have some way to open them up. They, I wonder if they go in with some, like a televising rig and cut them.
How would they know where to cut?
You could probably see it, cause it would probably push out, I would think.
I don't know.
When you go in with a televising, like even the the rig they would have had is similar to the one Empire has and stuff, but. When you go in, you you can see little deflections and stuff, I mean if there's something wrong, you can typically see that, so. I bet there would be something that would be noticeable there, um I don't know.
Well, we're, we're we're just wasting time now.
So I mean, we got a bathroom break.
So anyway, well, I'll, I'll, I'll visit with, I'll visit with Marge and maybe take us to the city of Woodmore then and.
Yeah.
At least give the Marge to give you a printout.
Classification.
Yeah, ru- if you can run a test bill, yeah.
Yep, yeah, the city, Woodmore does have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, well. I don't think we need any action there, just discussion mostly. Alright, um next is repair request.
We don't want anyone.
Alright. Roger, you wanna read yours off?
Sure, I got one, this number one nineteen. And it's the main tile broken, Linda Schuster, south of Tecton, it's on grain district number seventy eight. It's an old rotten tile, we fixed it before and we'll fix it again. And then I have another one in Germantown chip, it's on grain number seven, it's two Beaver dams. It's in my cap or his back, or ground. And. I'm gonna talk to the guy that does the trapping and see if we can trap the Beavers before we knock the dams out.
Yep.
That's alright, wouldn't you guys?
That's good.
Cause it's kinda useless to knock them out and have the Beaver building back the next day.
Yep.
The guy that traps them, he's only a half a mile away.
Not very far, I think. Is that all yours, Roger?
Yeah.
Alright, um. I got, here's Rogers, I got a couple here, um one twenty one, uh clean out of open ditch. Looks like Rodney thought there was some um rocks left on the top and spoils not leveled, I do know. It was very dry and soddy at the time that stuff was leveled, but we'll get that checked out. And one twenty is in Eagle thirty two, it's already been repaired, there's multiple broken spots and wash outs. One nineteen is in Hebron sixteen, uh multiple broke, mo- multiple holes there, um. A lot of those were just places the tile was pulling apart and there were some seams that were sucking, so that's already fixed and then. One sixteen is in Lead Yard section eleven, east side wash out on the bank and outlet pipe. Those are mine. So there. Alright, second, okay, second my actor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Alright, anything else for drainage here?
I think you talked to Goodwin.
No, but I need.
I'm gonna talk to you after, yeah, I'm gonna come talk to you.
Alright.
Okay, thanks, Marge.
Sounds good, thank you. Um discussion with our auditor.
Reminder, there's not a meeting next Tuesday due to the general election, so we will meet.
Happening.
Yeah, exactly, we will meet on the twelfth, um that day we have a busy day, we have a bid letting with secondary road and then we have our. Public hearing for Buffalo Township Urban Renewal, so um two things there already for the twelfth. Our office has been super busy with absentee voting, receiving an absentee ballots, um we've had a good turnout so far, we're. We're optimistic, uh hope, very, very happy to see the turnout we've had so far and hope that continues. My staff has been working um nonstop on their feet, long days, um we'll be here till five o'clock Friday and we'll be here Saturday from nine to five for absentee voting. Um if you get a chance, please tell my staff thank you, um they go above and beyond and they work really hard um for the county and and. And I'm very proud of of what we've been able to do this year, not just every day, but during the selection cycle, so. I'm asking you if you get a chance, please tell them thank you for what they do, um. I forgot when Doug was here, um I wasn't able to attend the meeting yesterday with. Um the school districts for the urban renewal, cause we were too busy with absentee mo- um voting, I know Kyle was here, Doug was here, I think was Amy on the phone.
Amy was on the phone, Carter was here, yep.
And I think all the questions got answered that um Elgonos Community School District had, um.
And actually, um I had talked with Joe Carter before the meeting, he was actually, he he did, he did ask a couple of questions, I know some to Doug beforehand. He asked me a couple brief ones, but he was very supportive of what we were doing and believes that the impact to the school districts would be. Very minimal if anything, um and really they still have, they can still set their levy rate, so he's like, it just. Kind of that's where they would set the levy rate potentially, because they benefit from valuations rising, so it's valuations versus levy rate, but.
There you go, the table.
Um. But no, he was, in general, he was very, very supportive and um. Did not have any concerns with what we were doing and he was the only one that had attended yesterday, so. That was.
Receive any other comments or questions from the other two school districts, um and I knew that he had called and talked to Doug about that earlier, so.
Yep.
Is there a period that they get the funding the same, I never did ask that question.
Period they get the funding?
When they get their funding, is it the same when the state backfills or when we can?
I have no idea how the state back though works.
I don't have any, I was just curious.
I, yeah, I beli- I believe so, um he didn't, he didn't mention anything about timing to me, but he did say, um. Basically, his, his big point was that the legislature has made um some. Kind of significant changes in the last couple of years that did support um the school in that use of TIF and in that type of scenario. So he said advocating with our legislators obviously to continue that and support it in any further way is great, but. He said like with what has already been done, as long as that maintains a status quo or better, he was pretty comfortable with the situation. Um so obviously, communication with our legislators on that front would be helpful, he had said, but otherwise, I mean. He didn't, he didn't talk about any major concerns that way, whether it was timing or anything else, um. Not a bad question by any means, I did not ask that specific question, but he did say he had done a fair bit of research into it here recently and. And was pretty comfortable with the topic at hand, so.
So I think the next steps is um consent agreements from the cities and then the public hearing on the twelfth, if I understand it right, that's where we're at with that.
I believe so.
You heard anything from the city?
I have two responses back, um signed from Burt and West Bend.
Okay.
So. We still have a couple weeks.
Yep. Sounds good, anything else?
Um I think that's everything I can think of right now.
Okay. Jack?
I have a four names last name.
Roger, Josh?
I have three. Um can I start out with, uh we had the Sioux County Economic Development um Director's Meeting. Um last Tuesday, we just kind of reviewed some of the the finances, um. Currently have uh four loans, revolving loans, oh they just um approved a fifth one. Uh that loan closing will be in December for um business called Park and Bark, um and that's gonna be kind of the south part of the. County, actually a little bit north of Laverne, they're gonna be, they're working on um building a a boarding um place there for pets and stuff.
Building a boarding facility north of Laverne?
A little bit north of Laverne, uh from what I recall from seeing it on the map, I don't think I have the map anywhere.
Well, there already is a boarding place north of Laverne, that's why I.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe they're, maybe they're renovating it or or.
Maybe somebody bought it, isn't it?
Yeah, possibly, um well, it's uh Mark and Mindy are are the ones that are doing the the. Bark, the Park and Bark, so.
Who's it?
Uh Mark and Mindy's here.
Oh, okay. Hmm, north of Laverne or north of?
I believe that is north of Laverne.
I think that's, I think that's south by Oak Lake and that's northeast of Elgonos.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd have to look at the map again, cause they, they had a pull up somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have the positive tail on the map.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Okay, okay, that's where I was thinking that, okay, that's where I was thinking.
It, that's, I'm, I'm fairly sure that's north of eighteen.
Yep, south of, okay, okay. Yep, that makes sense.
Yep, and that's, yeah, that's for yours.
So, uh they are planning their, we just approved the um budget and um. Some of the board directors will be here on December third, I believe they've already communicated that with you.
I don't know, maybe they very well could have, but I, that's a long ways away, that's not what I'm reading on right now.
Okay, um. So they, yeah.
We gotta get to it next week.
Yes.
Uh so they are planning on coming in uh December third, they will be requesting uh hundred twenty five thousand a year this year. Um one of the things that they wanted to highlight on that is um the health insurance and benefits offerings that um. They have over there right now currently, they don't have anybody on the plans, but um with the new director coming on, uh Todd coming on, he. Made a future look at utilizing the the health insurance benefits through there as well as um if they hire on. Uh because Linda's gonna be, um she's part time right now and she's gonna be leaving, so if they hire a new person for that, they may be looking at doing some. Health insurance, so they, you know, they wanted to highlight that with their, their asking, I'm sure they'll talk more about that on on December third when they come in.
Okay.
Um. Uh just kinda updated, uh Maureen and and Todd are kind of still going around visiting all the different businesses and and. Entities around Sioux and Palo Alto Counties, um cause that's been going really, really well, getting to meet everybody and. Uh so Maureen's doing an awesome job with organized she is with everything, so. Um he's getting a good introduction, um. There was a flyer that was printed out, the economic impact, um that was done by their staff, uh very. Well done, I'll kind of hand that around for you guys to kind of look at, um just kind of highlights some of the the different areas of Sioux County of. You know, our, our economic infrastructure and how things kind of work together, um. That was about it for Sioux Economic Development, uh then later on I had Emergency Management. Um there we kind of discussed the bylaws and and things like that, we're working on updating our bylaws, um. They're holding off on approving those until we can have legal review done, they are looking at, um the commission's looking at hiring. A, an attorney um to kind of review some of that stuff and then kind of keep it on with, with, you know, any issues and things that kind of come up, so. Couple of local attorneys, um. One of the other things that was kind of discussed was our um EMPG. Stuff with FEMA, they are um giving less grant dollars than what was originally anticipated, so that's gonna affect. Um for budget for training and stuff like that, so um. That'll be part of the, that was all part of like our budget discussion and everything there, so there are some, some changes to the budget, um. And I don't have that sheet, they did not have it printed out, so um but I did have it in an email and I can get that to you guys if you wanted to look at that, um. They are talking about moving forward with doing the per capita levy. Um and that did get voted on and approved, that I think some of the, the language that they're kind of waiting to hear back on from the twenty nine C. I think that's part of something that we're gonna possibly have an attorney look at too, um but I believe they'll be communicating with the sheriff's office on, on that as far as.
Is that to go on the ballot?
It is not, because the twenty nine C doesn't have it as as a requirement to be on the ballot, um. The way, I was a little fuzzy in the details, but the way that they described it is that um they would basically issue the the per capita levy. And then it would come on to our roles and then it would be paid out to them through the treasurer's office. Um so I'd have to look at some without language.
It has to be.
Uh yeah, I don't think you can have it without being voted in.
You can't have a levy on taxes or that.
They're.
Yeah, so they.
They're, they're trying to stick it on the supplemental levy and just make us, I would imagine, is what they're aiming for.
It is a little drained.
And, yeah, that is.
Which I don't, I don't think that's right at all.
I don't think you can just peg it in in anything without having a public vote on it.
Yeah, I'd have to do some research on that too, because.
That would, that would be new to me.
Even, even if they could, I think it, it stinks.
Yeah.
That's just, that's, that's my nice way of putting it.
I don't think taxpayers are gonna be happy about that.
Well, I don't know if it was, if they're doing, gonna do a per capita um request through us or if they're talking about doing it as a levy. Um and I think that's part of what they were waiting on for language from the twenty nine C, cause they are doing some updating on that as well. So.
I think they were waiting for legislation to pass and it hasn't passed yet.
Last, the, last year they were waiting for that too, yeah, and then they just told us to pay the bill.
Yeah, so until that passes, I don't know that, that they can do much.
Um let's see, they did, uh we did have a motion um to accept the forty five percent share on the utilities. There are still some questions as to how that's gonna be handled, if the utilities are all going to come to us here and then we um. Ask for those utility payments from that commission, um similar to, you know, the.
Yeah, we'll have to pay that here until our, our building.
EMS commission, the, yep, yep, so I, I did tell them that we are looking to schedule another um workshop to kind of go through that a little bit more. E M S Commission, the, yep, yep, so I, I did tell them that we are looking to schedule another, um, workshop to kind of go through that a little bit more, but. They did make a official, you know, motion to accept that they will take forty-five percent of the utilities at the building, so, um, and. After this meeting, we had the E nine one one meeting, however, we did not have a quorum, so we couldn't vote on, on that utilities portion, so. Um, so I think for right now, we do have to go ahead from the E M A Commission for the forty-five percent. We're just waiting for the, um, P M S and the E nine one one to basically okay that through their, their boards.
Did you ask how communication has gone between those groups?
There hasn't been a whole lot of communication from my understanding.
That would be mine as well.
So.
So who's paying the rest?
So forty-five to E M A, forty-five to E M S and ten to E nine one one.
So be forty-five, ninety, hundred, yeah. I.
Seems a lot for E M S that doesn't have that much.
Yeah.
They do have, um, E M S does have stuff stored in there, they, cause they have a couple of ambulances in there.
Um, they, they have been limited on their access to building in general, and I think that's maybe something we need to address. But, um, they definitely don't use fifty percent of the space, although. They probably should have access to more than they do, but, um. Also, I think there's a. Question of control and I think that's probably been a sticking point up to this point, um, and probably will continue to be, because. I don't think there has been a even, um. Communication between the entities that use it and that's something, in order to have that building be used. Productively for the good of the county, that's something that needs to be addressed, um. And I don't think E M S has anything on the cold storage side, even though they could. Um, and have asked for stuff to be able to be put back there, I believe, but if. E M A is using that location as, uh, um. How their E O C and, and office, if there's any use for office space or whatever, uh, drone room, I mean, that. I don't know, doesn't, doesn't quite add up to an even split for expenses to me, because those uses are needing. Different levels of expenses, but at the same time, to be able to have it work for everyone, they need to be able to. Effectively share together, so.
As of right now, I do not believe that she has office space in Woodmore, so it's strictly just used for a meeting space and, um. It's reserved for the E O C, they do have some, some stuff set up in there, but as far as I'm aware, they still have all of the funds and, um, the equipment and the other location.
Up here?
Up here, yes.
Then how is that the E O C if the physical equipment isn't out?
I would refer you to Chris on.
There might be a lot of questions there to be answered.
Um, so with that, we're, we do have an amendment that needs to be done as there were some, um. She said that there were some, uh, grants that were going to be coming in, but they needed to have a line item, so I think there was an amendment, um. Budget amendment that we're holding December seventeenth, um. Think that was the majority of the conversations there, um. And then E nine one one, uh, there we can discuss, um, new projects, utilizing like the fund balances and stuff like that, cause there's a. Bit of a fund balance there, uh, they are gonna be looking at potentially replacing equipment, some of the squad cars, um. They right now are working on replacing batteries and radios have, you know, reached it. An H where batteries need to be replaced to get new batteries in there to, to hold battery life, they got fifty-six new batteries on order. Um, discussed about the nine one one street sign project, they've got signs put up, um, they're gonna be driving and kind of checking on those and making sure everything's still good. Um, they will start going around and, um, after they've kind of run through and make sure their signs are all good, they're gonna go back and start pulling. Signs from rural addresses that are no longer existing, um, to kind of clear up some of that and that stuff, um. There is a project going on right now, but they're working with the cities to have people checking their house numbers. Uh, so that's a, that's a, you know, campaign they're doing right now, working with the radio station, um, radio station's actually. Uh, working with them to split the cost, um, and they're just basically advertising and saying, you, you know, that you need to check your house numbers, make sure that they're visible from the street. Things like that, so that way when emergency services arrive, they know they're at the right house, um. Let's see.
Thanks, they'll send out a letter about that every year.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't just tell them, uh, that they were including that in like the utilities bill, if I remember right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is a, a good thing to do. Other than that, I didn't have anything.
I, my care connections was just a virtual meeting to pay claims, pretty much, um, they were working on state reports and such, so that's been. Most, most of their time, um. But now, yeah, I attended the meeting yesterday briefly and, uh, strange stuff as always.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I, real quick, I forgot that, um, there is a retirement open house, we all got the flyers for that, just reminding, November fifteenth, um, at the Electoral Center. At, um.
Yep.
Interestingly enough, uh, Todd, the, the, uh, new director won't be in attendance, because he'll be in a conference, um, I believe in Omaha, and said. We didn't schedule it that way, but Maureen was really pushing for me to go to that conference, so.
She just didn't want to.
She didn't want to arrive, yeah.
Anything else, Chris? Um, last Friday I had C A J D C, one big thing we talked about is we have affiliate agreements and those have been in place for. Ten plus years and Tony is recommending that we, um, do away with them, basically. A lot of our conversation was focused on the financial side of things, um, but those agreements have transportation included in their fees and stuff. Um, those counties are Osceola, Guthrie, Dallas, Adair, Madison, Warren, Marion. Adams, Union, Clark, Taylor, Ringgold, Decatur, Wayne, Monroe, Keakook, Washington and Des Moines County, so there's, there's a pretty good list there. Um, some of them rarely if ever send us kids, so some of them it won't really apply to a whole lot, but. Um, that was a big conversation, that was, um, taped or postponed till our next meeting. As was discussion about our twenty eighty and bylaws, that was not sent out in the packet, um. That came until it was revised while we were in the meeting, so there was some concerns about, um. Talking about that when we had just received the proposed changes. Um, year to date, average, uh, full, we're at thirty-four point two. Which is about sixty-one percent, if we prorate that, that'll be about twelve and a half thousand bed days. Average full for fiscal year twenty-four was forty-three, and that was fifteen and a half thousand, so. As we get into the months, I would expect that to tick up some more, um. But we were kind of heavy on the member days here, this last month we had almost a thousand member days, so. Um, the twenty eighty and bylaw changes that were proposed, we did talk about the meeting previous a little bit, but there was. Some substantial concern about the current twenty eighty and whether it's actually effective or not and who has voting rights, because. Um, the last couple twenty eighties have not been filed with the Secretary of State timely, so we had. Um, had a motion at the previous meeting to get that checked into with our attorney, we did not really have an update on that, so. I'm hoping we get some more information and actually get that straightened out at our next meeting, but. That's kind of the big highlights there. Um, and then, yeah, it's been mentioned a couple times, the consultation session with school districts and all that, we've already touched on, so. I think that's about all I have. Anything else, anyone forgot?
Uh, what's like, Donna has emailed over a, um.
For the job?
Yes.
Yep, saw that pop in here a second ago. So yeah, everyone take a peek at that if you can, quick, and see if you got any thing you see there, but. Otherwise, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We had a finger by Roger, so, um, Carter can second, that'll work, um.
All set.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay, we adjourned, eleven oh six, thank you, everyone. Right.